Chao. All right, gang, it is seven oh five, so we are going to get ourselves started. Aloha, my kāpua, welcome everyone to the Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, regular Waimea Nalu Neighborhood Board Meeting. Uh, this is Chair Kani. I'll be hosting tonight's meeting and we welcome you folks from wherever you are tuning in this evening. Mahalo for, um, living through and, and fighting through this weather event. Uh, hopefully everyone is safe, your, your spaces, your families, um, everything is, is okay. Uh, today is, uh, being broadcasted, we're, we're on WebEx here for those that might be online. And then we are in person at Kapala Mahale with, uh, the MCO Assistant Rachel. Rachel, is there anyone with you there?
Yes, I have the ocean safety with me.
Okay, mahalo, so we have ocean safety in, in, uh, Akapala Mahale. And that's at nine two five Dillingham Boulevard, room two six zero. Uh, we want to welcome everyone to the Neighborhood Board Meeting. The purpose of the Neighborhood Boards and the Neighborhood Board Plan is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Rules for engaging, anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon. And when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. You can mute and unmute for those dialing in on the phone by pressing star six. Please, please, please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comment or question. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Uh, we have committed ourselves to serving and learning in aloha with akahi, modesty, lokahe, unity, olo, olo, pleasantries, ha, ha, humility, and aho'enui patience. This is to be used as a standard conduct for all of us that are participating. And given that we, uh, sometimes get into some really passionate discussions, we just want to be mindful about those things. And remind each other that if we need to take a break, we'll take a break. Um, at the end of the day, I believe all of our, uh, interests are in the intent of serving Waimea Nalu. So, um, please help us hold each other accountable to that. Notes that the board may take action on any, uh, agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law, HRS ninety-two. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, which is nine of the thirteen boards, uh, member board, is needed to add an item to the agenda and doing so, uh, is not permitted if one, the item to be added is of reasonably major importance. And two, action on the item by the board will affect a significant number of persons. Determination of whether a specific matter may be added to the agenda must be done on a case by case basis. Please silence all electronic devices and note that this meeting is being recorded. Uh, for our board members, please note when you are needing to make decisions and your vote must be cast. Uh, we ask that your cameras be turned on for that, otherwise you're welcome to leave them off. Um, but please encourage yourselves to, to do so at the appropriate time. Um, with that being said, do we have anyone that would like to open us up this evening for, with Puleh or with Oli to get our meeting started? Anyone this evening to open up with Puleh? Okay, seeing and hearing none. We will go ahead and offer eho mai, if you know eho mai, please go ahead and join in with us as a way of kind of gearing ourselves towards it. You, uh, you don't have to unmute, but if you so choose to, please do so. Mahalo, nui kāpua. Mahalo, we hope that that welcomes in learning for all of us this evening. At this time, we're going to turn it over to our Neighborhood Board Assistant Rachel Kristoff to call the attendance members. When your name is called, uh, please recognize again, if you can turn your cameras on for this, that would be wonderful. Mahalo, Rachel, please.
Thank you. First, Kanani. Yona.
Heo.
Ordis. Weta.
Heo.
Kapiolani.
Heo.
Was that for Ted?
Yes, I called Ted.
Heo.
Yep, okay, thank you. Sultan. Brenda.
Brenda is off island at this time, she won't be joining us this evening.
Thank you. Chasidi. Wike.
Heo.
Okay, with that, I have five members present.
Mahalo, so we are, uh, do not have quorum this evening, we need seven members present. So we'll send out some text messages and see if folks will be joining us this evening. Hopefully everyone is okay. Um, with that being said, members, we're going to continue on recognizing that we have five present, that we will not be able to take action on items this evening until quorum is established. So, we're going to move on, we have anyone here that would provide a message from our kupuna? We have created time and space to honor our kupuna from the community, if they so choose, uh, to provide us with any, uh, any kind of words that they would like to share, any kupuna? Okay, hearing none. In light of that, what we've committed to doing is just reading from one of our books. And so we are reading from the sites of Oahu book in light of, um, acknowledging kupuna voices, and I will just read the next one, the next description that is here, which we started last month. And so this reads from page two forty-four, speaking about Waimea Nalu and Ko'ola'upoko. And it goes as follows, description eighteen forty, uh, excuse me. Yeah, at that time, it seemed that the valley was filled with breadfruit, mountain apples, kukui and coconut trees. There were, there were taro patches with banks covered with tea and wauke'ee plants. Grass houses occupied the dry lands, a hundred of them here, and sweet potato and sugarcane were much grown. It was a great help towards their livelihood. The whole Ahupua'a of Waimea Nalu was leased to white men except the native pulianas. And because the cattle wandered over them, they were compelled to build fences for protection. The taro patches that were neatly built in the time when chiefs ruled over the people and the land were broken up. The sugarcane, tea and wauke'ee plants were destroyed. The big trees that grew in those days died because the roots could not get moisture. The valley became a place for animals. Kohona'ne'aukumanava'ua, October twenty-six, nineteen oh six. So we mahalo, uh, for those kupuna that helped to document those eras, uh, in their vision, uh, for us to learn from. Mahalo, we're moving on, our olalono'eia of the month, ike, ike, ike'ounu'i, miki'ouiki. Know the current, the big currents and the little currents. This speaks to one who is well-versed, this is olalono'eia one two zero nine. Ike, ike'ounu'i, miki'ouiki. Know the big currents and the little currents, again, speaking of one who is very well-versed. Olalono'eia one two zero nine. Mahalo, nui gang, we're going to move on to our emergency providers and public agency reports. Do we have anyone here this evening from the Honolulu Fire Department? Anyone from the fire department? Okay, seeing and hearing none, uh, we will move on. I'm going to pull up the fire department's report, I can read it in a little bit. Um, do we have anyone here from HPD? HPD? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on, Board of Water Supply. Anyone here from Board of Water Supply?
Hi, I'm here, good evening.
Hi Danny, thank you so much for joining us, the time is yours.
Hi, this is Danielle Hernandez with the Board of Water Supply. So the message from the Board of Water Supply for me, there was one water main break on Ala'ihi Street last, uh, uh, last April. Uh, this was a main that was installed in nineteen twenty-five on Ala'ihi Street. And then one announcement, uh, protect Oahu Water. The Board of Water asks to, for you to check out our website at boardofwatersupply.com/protectoahuwater to learn the latest about the Board of Water Supply's operational acts, actions in response to the Red Hill Crisis. This includes weekly water pumpage charts and usage, um, recent drinking and monitor well test results, um, our Board of Water Supply news and updates on the Red Hill situation, water conservation tips and rebates, and, um, some of Oahu's water history. And that's all I have for this evening. Pardon, I have a cold, I'm a little stuffy. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Danny, for that. Members, any questions for the Board of Water Supply this evening? Anyone from the public?
Well, okay.
Seeing and hearing none, Danny, uh, you know, hearing that, um, that the installation of this particular system that broke, um, is literally almost a hundred years old. Um, what, what is the status of, like, what is the oldest piping we have in Waimea Nalu? We know, and, I mean, is that a, is, is that a?
That's a really good question.
Is, is that lifeline?
Well, you know, different, different, um, types of pipe have different projected lengths, copper is fifty, um, PVC is, I believe, twenty to twenty-five. Cast iron, I believe, is seventy-five. But, um, I, I'm going to find out also, I'm going to look on this and see what is the oldest, and I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, but this was a, um, cast iron pipe.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, time has changed considerably over the last ninety-nine years. And cast iron underwater offers some perhaps concerns about safety, right? In regards to any bleaching. And so I, I would be curious if, if we could get a report back about what that system might look like today. I can imagine, as we've upgraded, we've certainly included, uh, a variety of different types of system improvements. So if we, if we could get a report back on that, I think that'd be something of interest for us.
Yeah, it's very interesting. Okay, I will, I will work on that.
Appreciate it, thank you very much, Danny. Uh, mahalo. All right, members, we're going to go back up to, um, to the fire department's, uh, report, which I'll read. The statistics below represent confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month. This is, uh, the date of May first, twenty twenty-four. This is the May twenty twenty-four Neighborhood Board Honolulu Fire Department's report. Uh, I will put the link, I, I will put their email address in the chat for those that might be interested in it. Uh, incident statistics for April twenty twenty-four fires, there were no structure fires. There was one wildland and brush fire, four nuisance fires. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle. There was no cooking fires and there were one activated alarms, but no fire. Emergencies, there were thirty-five medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collision with pedestrians, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, zero hazardous material incidents, and four motor vehicle crash and collisions. Uh, fire safety tips and announcements, the fire safety tip for May, uh, was, is wildland fire awareness, prevention and preparedness. Wildland fires significantly threaten Hawaii's landscapes, wildlife and communities. With dry conditions and everyday activities contributing to the increased risks, it is crucial to take proactive measures to prevent and mitigate wildland fires. Uh, lighten the load, reduce fuels and the possibility of ignition of your landscape by maintaining your yard and cleaning your gutters. Clear, cool and contain, clear vegetation, ten feet around campfires and barbecues. Keep a shovel and water nearby and put them out cold before walking away. Watch the spark, ensure machinery, chainsaws, weed trimmers and recreational vehicles with operating spark arresters are maintained regularly. And lastly, to learn more about these online resources, visit fire.honolulu.gov, the Department of Emergency Management at honolulu.gov/dem, and the Hawaii Wildlife Management Organization, hwmo.org/lookout. I will again put that also in the chat for us to look at. Um, with that being said, members, are there any questions for the fire department that we can put on record? Okay, I'm seeing and hearing none, mahalo, we will press on. Um, I understand that the mayor's representative is not going to be joining us this evening. And we do have a report, however, Rachel, are you going to be presenting that report or will I need to read through it?
Uh, I can read, I, if you don't mind, uh, waiting, I can pull it up to read it.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. And then I've listed the ocean safety follow-up under the mayor's office, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we take the, the ocean safeties presentation and we can close with, uh, the mayor's report following that? So if we can introduce the ocean safety team?
Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Can you guys still hear me?
We can, if we can move the mic a little closer, I think that would be helpful.
All right, hey, aloha, guys, my name's Kurt Lager, I'm currently the acting chief for ocean safety. Um, I'm also joined here by, uh, Captain Sloan of District Two, which is, uh, the Windward Side District for Ocean Safety. Um, I apologize, I don't have a presentation. Um, I actually only found out about this, uh, very recently as I stepped into this acting chief role. Um, so I apologize if there was supposed to be a presentation, but I think I did want to make a statement that, um, I learned that there was some complaints, uh, made on ocean safety, um, about some of our employees. And, uh, I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that we take any, um, complaints, alleged or not, that we take them seriously. Um, we have our city policies, there are state laws, and we have our standard operating guidelines that we follow. And I want to ensure everyone that's on this call and the public at large that, um, we will look into this, we are looking into this. Captain Sloan has already gone and talked to, um, most of his district. And I intend on going out and visiting the lifeguards as well and making sure that they understand all these different laws and guidelines. And I brought with me, um, our standard operating guidelines. Um, I didn't realize no one was going to be here and that this was going to be online. So, um, but I did bring a copy and I'll leave it here with Rachel, um, and she can distribute that out to whoever she likes. Um, but, um, with that, I'd just like to say thank you, this is my first Neighborhood Board meeting. And, um, it's already been informative, just listening to the first few people talk. And, uh, I can leave my contact info in the chat or have Rachel do that with my phone number. Um, if there's ever any violations in policies, laws, anything that the public sees, a city and county lifeguard making, um, please call me and we will address it ASAP. This shouldn't be happening and, uh, we want to make sure that we are providing the best service we can and being professional at all times. So with that, mahalo.
Mahalo, nui, thank you so much for, uh, that statement. I, I do want to make sure that I'm clear and, and I appreciate you, um, kind of stepping into this position fairly recently. Um, you know, the concerns that were outlined by the community, there is an expectation that we receive a follow-up. And, and we recognize that the, um, investigation is more of an internal matter. But we will, we would really, really strongly request that that be at some point provided back to us with the outcome. Um, there is a question of public trust here that we are responsible to, um, to fight and advocate for. I also sent the director a video of some very disturbing behavior, allegedly, again. Um, but I'm hoping that that video is also one that is being investigated. Clearly, there are concerns and even more so now, um, there's going to be more people watching. And so we are very conscious of that, we, as a community, many of our people, um, you know, have served this community in their roles as, as ki'ola and, and has provided us with incredible value. Um, and this is such a very uncharacteristic behavior of, of people that we have grown up trusting in our waters. And so we really hope, um, that this in your new role, um, however long it may be, that it's taken as seriously as a community hopes that it will be, sir. And we appreciate you being here and, and fielding some of the questions and thoughts that some of us might be wanting to share with you this evening. So, uh, members, I'll open that up for questions for ocean safety, if there are any board members? Okay, I'm seeing and hearing no hands, anyone from the public questions for ocean safety? Okay, seeing and hearing no hands. Gentlemen, I appreciate you folks making the time to come out this evening. We do look forward to, um, your, uh, your contact information. And we look forward to working further with you folks on understanding the role of our lifeguards in our waters. There was a question of, you know, how, how do we manage some of the rules around these, these waters in our, in our inshore waters? And so I know that Dobar is also been invited to participate and Don Care has also been invited to participate in some level of discussion. Um, hopefully at one point in our future, we'll be able to get everyone in the same room and start talking about what those, uh, opportunities and, and hopefully concerns might, um, be able to be addressed at that point in time. But this evening, thank you so much, gentlemen, for, uh, making time for our community, we appreciate your service, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Rachel, are you ready to read the report?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, mahalo.
Could I go over some of the highlights, uh, for the mayor's newsletter? An update on major improvements at the Department of Plan and Permitting. Details on the city annual sustainability report, which was published on Earth Day. The project to remove the Haiku stairs officially gets underway. All to protect your families from fires during Wild Fire Awareness Month. And as the Summer Fund program mirrors, how can you land a job and help Oahu keke? Uh, May two thousand twenty-four edition of the mayor's newsletter can be found online. And also I'll have it in the Google Drive as well, too. And then meet your city officials. There's going to be two, four more town hall meetings left, which will include an open question and answer session with the mayor and representatives from the twenty-five city departments and agencies. And then we have Seoul, Seoul Lay from Memorial Day. And then Summer Fund, uh, the Department of Parks and Recreation is still looking for plenty of stuff to help put the fund in Summer Fund. These jobs are an excellent way to gain experience in the childcare field while earning a minimum of sixteen dollars an hour in a dynamic work environment with dozens of program sites around Oahu. For information, visit bit.ly/summerfundjob. And then I'll go to the department issues follow-up. Uh, question, multi-purpose building update, has an, an anticipated completion date been determined? If so, what is it? Department of Design and Construction, then, um, the general contractor is in the process of completing several safety code corrections needed before the facility can be opened. The anticipated completion date and turnover to the Department of Parks and Recreation is mid-June twenty twenty-four. I know we have ocean safety here, uh, but this is, was a question for them. Uh, so there is a video circulating on social media of an Oahu lifeguard allegedly telling other parties not to help a person in distress because they ignored warnings. The board respectfully requests HESD to have someone at the future board meeting to discuss the concerns and the results of the HESD investigation, or at least a portion that can be shared with the public. So that's with the, you know, ocean safeties are here, so they were here to, um, provide their contact. And I will pour that later in the meeting. And that's everything, so any questions, let me know.
Mahalo, nui, thank you so much, Rachel, for reading the mayor's report. Members, any questions for the office of the mayor? Seeing none, uh, we have Sanford Uwe? Sanford Uwe, you have a question for the office of the mayor? Oh. Officer, we'll, we'll get right, we'll get right back to you, sorry, I just recognized that. So, we'll, we'll take questions for the office of the mayor and then we'll come back to HPD. Anyone from the public questions for the office of the mayor? Okay, hearing and seeing none, uh, Rachel, thank you so much for reading the report. I'm sure we will have things kind of trickling in, uh, that will get some responses back and towards. So, uh, we hope everything is okay with, um, the director. Uh, we're going to go, members, back to HPD, recognizing that HPD is now on the call. Uh, so HPD officer Uwe, the time is yours, sir.
Aloha, I apologize for the tardiness. As you know, the weather is really bad and we're dealing with a lot of situations. Um, I'm guessing the stats were not presented to you?
No.
Okay, so the stats for April, um, motor vehicle theft is up from one to three. Burglaries went down from two to zero. Regular thefts are unchanged at ten. Motor vehicle break-ins are unchanged at two, and robberies went from one to zero. Be happy to answer any questions at this time?
Mahalo, thank you so much, officer. Members, any questions for HPD, members of the board? Seeing and hearing none, we will move to the public, we have a hand up from Karen. Karen, your question for HPD?
Yes, hi, sorry, I'm in the dark and I hope you can hear me over the rain. Um, my, my question is, um, out here at Saddle City, we've had, um, some repeated trouble with trespassing. A couple of days ago, we had three truckloads of hunters with their hunting dogs come into Saddle City, um, where you may know it's, uh, low to moderate income housing, there's kids, there's pets, there's all kinds of, um, challenges, and I did call the police and I did wait for them. Um, it was suggested that I, that somehow the residents of Saddle City hire a private security guard. And I'm just wondering, uh, that obviously isn't economically feasible. I'm just wondering what else could be done about the hunters. Um, there was about twelve dogs and there was a child with his pet dog right next to where they were unloading the hunting dogs. I was able to get them to leave when I told them that the police were coming, but I'm just wondering what else could be done. We do have private property, no trespassing signs, um, just wondering what other help, what else we should do and what other help the police could give us?
Other than, I would suggest possibly posting a sign that says hunting is, um, illegal or, um, something to that effect. Uh, other than that, keep calling us so we can address them. Generally, if they're, if they're local people and you tell them, hey, you guys cannot hunt over here, they'll usually leave. Um, but if not, it's also, yeah.
Okay, it is repeated, I did have the license plate and all of the face of the people. I asked the officer to please check and see if they were the people that they had warned last time. But, um, for some reason, he was unwilling to do that. And, um, so, yeah, I'm just, I'm just hoping that the police will follow up because we have license plates, pictures of all the people. Um, because me just telling them to go away hasn't, um, hasn't been effective.
What time was that?
Um, let's see, it was about six PM in the evening. And by the time I finally had talked to the sergeant and the second officer, it was about eight thirty at night. Um, and it was, I don't know, they did do a report finally. Um, and I provide the video and all the license plate number, both this time and the last time they were here a couple of months ago. Um, we do try to call as soon as we see them because it's really dangerous.
So you're saying they were trespassed in the past?
Well, they weren't trespassed, they were just told to leave by the police. They said because it was the first They said because it was the first time, they couldn't do it or something. They're, what they're doing is they're hunting for pigs on Olamana and in Bellows. And so I'm also wondering if if maybe something could be worked out with Olamana Golf Course and Bellows. Like, maybe you want them to hunt the pigs there and maybe they could have access directly rather than in a small residential community with the dogs. You know, the pack of dogs off leash.
Yeah, for the time being, keep calling nine one one. If you feel comfortable addressing those people. You know, I wouldn't usually recommend that you don't, but if you do and they leave, then great. But if not, please continue to call us.
This time it was a lot of dogs and a lot of men. But because the boy was there with his pet dog, I felt like I needed to at least make an attempt to get them to leave before, you know, the child or the dog was hurt. So, okay.
Of course.
Mahalo for the question and the response. Anyone else from the public question for HPD? Seeing and hearing none, I want to recognize Board Member Santiago at seven thirty six PM. Mahalo for being here in Chassidy. And, yeah, we we recognize that the weather is still causing some trouble with people in regards to traffic. So mahalo for making time this evening. Officer, I don't see any other questions. Kuike, you had a question?
I just have a follow-up question for for Karen and then the officer.
Please.
Karen, is is the access road to Saddle City a public road?
No, the the property line is where the driveway starts. So we have a bunch of no trespassing, no, I think I didn't put up the no hunting signs. It just says no trespassing, private property, no entrance. But so it is private, yeah.
Mahalo, Karen. Officer, I have a follow-up comment. I hope that in the future, if ever any hunters are ever approached or even fishermen in Wa Manalo, that you folks confirm with them, yeah, that if they're in fact native Hawaiians. Because I would advise HPD to to look at Article twelve, section seven of the State of Hawaii's Constitution that protects native Hawaiian gathering rights when it comes to cultural, spiritual, as well as religious and traditional practices. Now, I do understand the safety concern here. Yeah, you have gentlemen who have dogs for the purpose of hunting and with children and their loved ones' pets nearby. So I do understand the safety concern. However, no, the law also protects these practices if these practitioners are in fact native Hawaiians. So how you folks move forward with that, HPD, I leave that up to you. I don't want to tell you guys how to do your job, however. But please keep in mind that a traditional customary practices are protected under the state's supreme law, which is the Constitution, under Article twelve, section seven. Mahalo, chair, for the time of your back.
Yes, Kuike, could you just answer for me? So are they, I understand, I totally understand what you're explaining. And my question is, how does that relate to private? I don't know the the rules.
I can respond. So according to the law, yeah, any public or and or private land that is undeveloped. Yeah. Native Hawaiian practitioners have access to. What I'd recommend moving forward, Karen, for you folks is, and again, I don't want to place the burden on you folks because this is your home. And I and I get it and I understand. Yeah, so however, I I just recommend that we build relationships with with our practitioners and hunters. Yeah, and maybe like you said, moving forward, figure out if there's a program or a way that Olamana Golf Links, as as well as possibly Bellows Air Force Field and even McTad, yeah, can figure out how we can provide access to these practitioners, these hunters, for one, their safety as well as the community. So Karen, I apologize if if, you know, whatever whatever he hear that may be causing you folks in there in Saddle City with these accesses. I just want to make sure that we're not violating anybody's, you know, rights to access. So mahalo again, Karen, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, it does. Thank you so much. And Kimi Ona, Chair Kone. I know this may not be the time, but my phone is gonna die. So I just wanted to also thank both you and Major Dalen, I believe is his name, for addressing that flooding issue from the stream behind Weinberg Village that was blocking up to Saddle City Road. I today, this afternoon, I did get response from that and I know they're gonna be working on it soon. So I appreciate that help today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. Be safe out there. Mahalo. Okay, HPD, mahalo. I think that brings that conversation to a close. I really mahalo you folks for your work this evening. I know there's a lot going on, so thank you guys very much for your service.
Good night.
Good night. Captain Granado, I read the report from HFD earlier. Did you want to address the community at all?
No, unless there's any questions, I apologize for being late. You went over the statistics and the fire safety note as well?
I did, sir, yes.
Yes, thank you about that. I am sorry about that. It's been a crazy evening. I hope everybody's okay out there. Is there any questions?
There were no questions fielded from the community or from the board for the Honolulu Fire Department at this time, sir.
All right, thank you very much again. Sorry for my lateness. Have a good night.
Not a problem. Thank you for your service. You folks be well and safe as well. Mahalo, Captain, thank you. All right, members, we're gonna move on. I do recognize that we are still not with quorum. So there is only six members present. We're working on getting a few other folks to jump in and join us this evening. I just want to make sure that I give time for that. Lulu, are you online at all? Whether you're online or you're on phone, Lord Es Milan? Kanani Gramberg, are you online at all? Sultan Rudolix, are you online? And then Brenda Wong is not present. So, okay, so we recognize six members present. We're gonna press on. Because there is not quorum this evening currently, we're gonna defer number three, the filling of three vacancies. I do recognize that we did have a member of our community willing to join us on the Neighborhood Board. Jenna McKeeg was interested in in joining our our Neighborhood Board. Is that correct, Jenna? If you can unmute, there you go. We can. I, you know, I want to acknowledge your time, Jenna, this evening because you are here. I do want to give you the opportunity to share your your story with the community and your interest. Without quorum, we're unable to take action on your position this evening. But I do want to give you the opportunity to address the community and the board. So maybe a few minutes is an introduction and maybe some of the things that are important to you and your interests with regards to the Neighborhood Board.
Hello, my name is Jenna McKeeg. Mostly raised in Wa Manalo. I'm a two thousand seven graduate. As by my my MBA. I currently work as a charter for Kikulo, Samuel and Kamako. I take care of these and parts of married, I have three Malamahonua. Mo Kikai after school here in Wa Manalo. She's currently in pal volleyball. Kapalama, he's into every basketball, ukulele, you name it. His bus stops. Yes, is a preschooler. She's at Blanch Pope Elementary. Kayapuni next year. Our family has a lot of activities community as well as our neighboring community. I have been wanting to contribute into what I've been children are currently growing for future generations and not just for my children, for all of children that I feel like positive. But also keeping our small country culture that we have. And I think that's chill. I want to be an active member in our community. I think that the decisions that we make now will likely have to be involved in that decision. I would love to connect with other community members and build relationships, not only, but also for others. Like, you know, if we up another person, let's connect them, you know, how much more connected Ultimately, I just want to give back to the community. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Jenna, thank you so much. We are working to get a seventh member on board. So if you don't mind just kind of hanging out, if that seventh member is able to connect and we can move from there, then we will come back to the item where we might be able to 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 bring you on board this evening. So if you don't mind hanging out with us for the remainder until we can get that connection, I'd appreciate that. But mahalo for sharing your story and, you know, mahalo for your willingness to serve. Thank you. So members, recognizing that we do not have quorum, I'm gonna ask that we press on. Recognizing if we do establish quorum, we can come back to this item and serve and and, you know, control that part at that point, I should say. Okay, so we're gonna press on. We have community organization reports. I don't see Jamie online, but I do see. Where did she go? Kanani, are you presenting this evening? And then there is Wa Manalo Ohana. I'm just questioning if that's for Wa Manalo Elementary as well. Kanani, can you test your mic? I'm not hearing anything from you. Your mic is unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything. There you go. Hi, welcome.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Are you, are you sharing this evening for Wa Manalo Elementary?
I am, but more for the community and I, we just have one quick announcement.
So I don't have You do that and then I will read the report from Jamie.
Okay, perfect. Our only announcement is that we are a collection site.
Can you introduce yourself, Kanani?
I'm so sorry. Aloha mai koko, Kanani Kuhunenui. I am the community school coordinator for Wa Manalo Elementary and Intermediate. And my quick announcement is in conjunction with the Wa Manalo seniors. We are a drop-off site for fresh flowers for the Solea Lay for Memorial Day. So if anyone would like to donate fresh flowers or a pre-sown lei or a la'i lei, we are collecting them either Thursday the twenty third at our Family Resource Center between ten thirty and two or Friday the twenty fourth between eight thirty and ten thirty. And then we will be handing the flowers over to the Wa Manalo Senior Center, who will be sowing and taking the lays up on Memorial Day. That's all.
Mahalo, Nui, Kanani, thank you so much for that recognition. Members, any questions for that update at this time? Anyone from the public?
Yes, Kuike.
Kuike, go ahead.
Yeah, just a point of clarification for Kanani. Kanani, mahalo. But just a point of clarification, when you're, when you folks are requesting for flowers, is it flowers to kuile or like any kind of flowers?
The majority is to kuile, but I believe they are accepting loose flowers such like anthurium and maybe some gingers also to place up at the graves.
Awesome, mahalo. And then furthermore, the lei la'i, is it just a simple vili lei? You guys requesting?
Yes, correct.
Chair, back to you.
Mahalo, Kuike, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna read Principal Delacruz's message and I I want to recognize. Lulu, can you unmute if that's you? Star six? Or if you're online, can you just make your voice present? Okay, we'll we'll let you get coordinated and then we'll we'll press on. But I'll read the report from Jamie. Delacruz, this is from Wa Manalo Elementary Intermediate. One, we have been challenged with students climbing onto the roofs. If you see any of this, please ensure to call police to ensure safety. Number two, ho'i ke is this Friday and our schedule is flipped. Wednesday is Friday and vice versa. I'm hoping that makes sense because he didn't give me any other information there. We are partnering with Napono next year to provide Ohana with culture-based early childhood support. Our eighth grade promotion is on May thirtieth and is on a Wednesday schedule. May thirtieth is Thursday, but it is on a Wednesday schedule. We are in search of highly qualified teachers for grade seven math and grade seven ELA, sped pre-K, sped middle school and sped elementary, grade five. Any help with connecting with prospects is appreciated. There have been a group of young gangsters or youngsters, excuse me, on campus at night who have damaged the the night security car by throwing rocks. Any information is appreciated to stop this behavior before it becomes a criminal case. That was provided by the principal at Wa Manalo Elementary and Intermediate. If there's any questions, I can take them now. Members of the board, any questions for Wa Manalo Elementary? Okay, seeing and hearing none, anyone from the public? Seeing and hearing none, we're gonna move on. Blanch Pope Elementary, Kikula Kayapuni of Wa Manalo. Do we have anyone here for that presentation this evening? Principal Resentis. Hearing and seeing none, moving on. Principal Denise Espanya, Malamahonua Public Charter School. Mahalo for being here.
Aloha, I can't figure out why I cannot make my video go on. So I'm gonna see if I can share my, share my screen I put together. Let me see if it's gonna work. Can you see the, at least my PowerPoint?
Yes, you, we can.
Okay, at least you don't need to see my face then. That's perfect. Aloha ova' Denise and the po'at Malamahonua Public Charter School. Mahalo, Nui, Chair and Board for allowing us to share. This is just one of, this is our current So I think this is an appropriate hola lono eao as we embark on our third trimester for our haumana and really thinking about the importance of taking care of the learning and the multiple opportunities to engage with our community partners, with Aina and figuring out how now they can utilize that knowledge and apply it and share out what they've learned in their own personal projects. So a variety of different ho'i ke that I'm sure are happening at all the schools now. So just a highlight of the past month. We were able to engage and our haumana had a different perspective. They were able to expand expand their global perspective and reach out and meet with and interact with First Nations from the continent. It was really beautiful to see how some of our haumana, the Sukis are in the and the Kalamas have that that connection. The Kalamas have that, uh, um, that connection both, um, within their Ohana with, um, both First Nation. As well as, um, Hawaii. So they were able to engage with our older students and then some of our students were able to share. Um, kula, oli mele at their, um, powa' at Alamoana. Um, we also were able to have the celebration, um, Malamohonua, I apologize for that. I'm sure everybody can hear that, um, uh. Partners as well as Blanch Pope, I believe, partners with Kristi Yamaguchi and the Always Dream Foundation. Providing for our kindergarteners, um, opportunities to read outside of school. And then our two, um, kindergarteners that I was able to interact with, the, their hoikee, sharing their projects that they did. Um, after learning this past year, um, how can they give back and share the iki that they learned? And this is. Um, La'a who's doing La'a Mea who's shared a book that he wrote about, um, taking care of our plants and animals of Puka. Um, and Makailan who created a little sand sifter game. Um, and she wanted, they both shared with me the importance of being able to share the iki with a variety of different people so that. Everybody can help to Malama Ina. Um, we also had our sixth graders, they had their sale, um, at the end of last month. And so just some images of them sailing, um, and then this past, um, Friday. We had a, um, movie on the lawn with our hometown legends. Um, and just a brief introduction to, um, the work that, uh, Kimiona has been working on. Um, we did a brief introduction about how we're interviewing our kupuna in Wamanalo and hopefully sharing that out in October. But we celebrated, um. Uh, the film, hometown legends and, and the beauty of preserving our, um, kupuna and our community members. Um, because they have powerful stories that they, they share and there's so much that we can learn from. Um, and then we were open with, um, uh, pu'a, puna ni kama, and so that's just, um, and our students. In our, um, Malamohonua, uh, kona band. And so it was just a beautiful evening. We thought that the, the flooding was coming and, um. Uh, mahalo keakua for a beautiful evening that maybe had a light sprinkle, but we're able to still celebrate the evening together. So mahalo Nui for allowing me to share a little bit about Malamohonua. We too will be having puka kula at the end of May.
Mahalo Nui, uh, Kumudini, thank you so much for the update. Members, any questions for? Malamohonua Public Charter School. Okay, seeing no hands, anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna see if Lulu, Lulu, can you test your mic?
Can you hear me?
Okay, perfect. Crystal, can we now acknowledge Lulu as present, seven fifty eight P M? Mahalo, that brings our quorum to seven members total, so we mahalo you folks. We, we're gonna go back to, um, the. Item with regards to the vacancies after we complete these updates. So if Jenna, if you can hang tight till then, that would be appreciated. Um, hearing no questions for Malamohonua Kumudini, thank you so much for your service. We look forward to your continual growth as a kula. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Members, we're moving on. Hui Malamao Kekei. Hearing none, Windward Community College. Chancellor Artist. We want to congratulate them on their puka as well. They recently had that this past week, so mahalo to them for their service. Uh, University of Hoi College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources is not able to be here this evening. Um, Hoi Job Corps is also, Auntie Julie is also traveling, so we're gonna press on to the Wamanalo Health Center. We have Jasmine here. Jasmine, the time is yours. Mahalo Nui.
Mahalo. Good evening. Um, tonight we have Dr. Kalpua with us to share about vision services. So I'm just gonna give a couple of updates and then he's gonna share with you about that. So I wanted to share about a new program that we have. It's, uh, cooking classes with Wamanalo-based Ma'afarms and well-fed Ohana. So they're using locally grown produce to have those classes and use local recipes. So that's the last Tuesday of the month from ten to noon. And if anyone's interested, you can call Jennifer at nine five four seven one six two. And they also use produce that is in the C S A boxes. So if anyone's a recipient of those, this is a nice chance to find some new recipes for those. And then also wanted to share again about the farmer's market. It's continuing to grow. Thank you for the support. Um, vendors are still welcome. If you're interested, Jennifer is the contact for that as well, nine five four seven one six two. But that's every Wednesday, two to five fifteen, and we do accept SNAP and E B T. So now I want to hand it over to Dr. Kalpua. Thank you.
Aloha, Kalpua.
Aloha.
Hope you folks can hear me. I hope you're having a good evening. Yes, I'm Dr. Kalopua. Born and raised in Wamanalo. I've been at the health center for about eleven years now. I opened it up. Prior to that, I was in private practice for about thirty years in I A. I'm happy to be in Wamanalo. And the services we provide, it's like primary care optometry. So we also, we do eye exams. Um, we have this machine that can take a picture of the back part of the eye and it's been very helpful for patients who are diabetic. We also service the Medicaid community. For them, we have free eye exams. And free glasses if they qualify, so we give them that. And if they're an adult, it's good for every two years. If you're, uh, under eighteen, then it's every year. So most of the business that I do at the health center, usually it's about maybe ninety for, ninety-five percent. Uh, those who are on Medicaid. The rest, we also do vision service plan and some other insurances. So, uh, because I've been in so long, the, I, I'm familiar with a lot of the ophthalmologists. So I do refer out to neurologists, to ophthalmologists, for patients who need cataract surgery. For those who need, uh, some touch-ups on their diabetic retinopathy, so. It's a good opportunity for people who would like to come to the health center and get their eyes checked. Um, any, any questions?
Mahalo, Dr. Kalpua, welcome, uh, to the neighborhood board. Thank you so much for making time for us this evening. Members, any questions for the Wamanalo Health Center or for Dr. Kalpua this evening? Okay, I'm seeing none. Do we have anyone from the public with questions for the health center or Dr. Kalpua? Okay, seeing none. Jasmine, uh, we want to mahalo you folks for being here. And thank you so much for bringing Dr. Kalpua here this evening as well. Mahalo to you both for your service.
My pleasure. Thank you. Mahalo, aloha.
Aloha for coming, doctor.
Jasmine, does that complete your, your part?
Yes, it does.
Mahalo Nui, I appreciate it. Um, I'm reading in the chat a message from Artist. Uh, Windward Community College having some difficulties connecting our news. Let's just congratulate all of our graduates and their families. Artist, if you are on now, I'm happy to give you the, the floor.
Aloha, Chair Kimiona. Um, new computers, so it made me download software and all sorts of things. I really apologize it's so tardy, but really. We just had our commencement on Friday evening and I'm very thankful to all the graduates who came and their families. And the community members who came out. It was really a celebration and thank you to the family members who supported them. If you're interested in going to college or have a relative who is, our applications are open for fall. And even I think you can get into summer session too. We have scholarships for all of our graduates, or all of our. High school graduating class of twenty twenty-four on the Windward side. We have a scholarship promise that if financially it doesn't cover their tuition, we will, the Ho'ole Scholarship. Thanks to Harold Kale Castle Foundation. And if you're interested in studying Aho Pua'a systems. We also have a scholarship for those who are coming to work with us on Aho Pua'a Systems Management in that degree. And want to work on campus in our Mala. So, and that's a full tuition scholarship plus a little extra for books and supplies, five thousand dollars total per year. Okay, mahalo, sorry for being out of order and thank you again to everyone.
Mahalo, Artist, and congratulations. Thank you very much for your service.
Okay, I'll go see that doctor. You know, they feel more comfortable.
Sorry, can we? Can we, let's see. Okay, mahalo. All right, gang, we're gonna continue on. Do we have anyone here from the Hawaiian Homestead Association? Hearing none, moving on, we have Bellows Air Force Station. Major Chen, thank you so much for being here, sir. The time is yours.
Aloha and good evening, everyone. My name is Major Dylan Chen from Bellows Air Force Station. Uh, no major updates. Uh, we are back open to normal hours. Uh, starting as one May, so I just want to thank the community for your patience as we're going through that program. Um, also, I would like to thank the, uh, community. So we heard we had about, or unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it, but we had about four hundred volunteers from the community. With Sustainable Coastlines Hawaii for Earth Day. So it was an amazing event, so, uh, thank you to the community for coming out and supporting that. Um, and then on that note as well, I'd say, you know, Bellows Air Force Station is looking to grow the environmental, uh, education program. And then bring on more folks to come out, more students to come out. So if you're interested, uh, we have a great environmental team we can reach out to and then we can kind of work out some. Uh, potential learning opportunities out here on the, uh, installation. And any questions? That's all I have for tonight.
Mahalo Nui, thank you, Major Chen. Members, any questions for Bellows Air Force Station? Okay, seeing none, anyone from the public? All right, seeing none. Uh, Major Chen, I do have a question. You know, the, I did attend the RAB meeting this past RAB and it was very, very difficult, um, for us to engage in that meeting. Connectivity was considerably an issue, uh, and I'm just wondering if there's going to be another opportunity for that RAB to reconvene. Or if there was an opportunity for, uh, an update in a more brief, um, manner to the neighborhood board. As, as a minimum to try and get that information out to the public. Um, would you be able to comment on any of that?
Uh, yes, that's a good question. And I do apologize, I heard about it afterwards that, um, not only here in the community, but folks in Kadina as well and Okinawa, Japan. Uh, had some difficulties, uh, dialing as well. I can bring it up to Jennifer and kind of talk to her about it to see. Uh, maybe we have the, the recording we could share or, uh, we can do, as you mentioned, you know, just a quick update, uh, with the community. I think that'd be, uh, reasonable. So I can get back to you on that. If you can give me a little bit, I can reach out to Jennifer and talk to her about that.
Mahalo, I'd appreciate that. And, and recognizing that we do have Kuike as a co-chair. Uh, I, I would strongly encourage that there be some, some, you know, dual conversations in there to bring him on board as well.
Yes, will do. Thank you.
Mahalo, Major. Thank you so much for being here this evening and, uh, again, hope everyone is being safe out there as well. Uh, thank you. Members, we're gonna press on. We have, uh, Marine Corps Base Sawai. We have Miss Kristi Kaluhiwa this evening. Kristi, thank you so much for being here. I hope you too are being safe where you are.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I am. It is quiet at the moment, but, uh, we're keeping our eye on the radar. Um, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Chair and members of the community. Uh, my name is Kristi Kaluhiwa with the Marine Corps Base. I have just a few updates. Um, I wanted to share that. On July twelve, that weekend, the, um. Community section of the, um, campsite and the beach area, um, will be closed for training. And this is in, um, support of RIMPAC as well as July twenty-sixth, a Friday. From twelve noon until Monday, the twenty-ninth at eight A M. That weekend also will be closed. Uh, in support of RIMPAC. And I do believe that that is also the weekend that they're planning to do. A, um, a D V or a delegated, uh, delegation visitor event. Where, um, members of the neighborhood boards on the Windward side will be invited to, to attend. Um, do I have any questions about that one? Are those two, those, those letters also will be sent to the city and county informing them of. The closures of the beach. So to Nate and, um, our, uh, Loa' Thielin. Um, also, I wanted to follow up with you about the stream clearing. Thank you for that email that you, uh, reached out to me this evening. I was able to get ahold of some of the staff at McTab before they left for the evening. They had already reached out to the facilities department to let them know. Um, and one of the guys had said that there's somebody that's further upstream that's been clearing some of his property. And I got a picture showing all of the debris, all the way down to the bridge, you know, the bridge right before you go into the air force. That if, if the rain continued, that bridge is gonna get washed over. So there was quite a bit of debris, but their facility is aware of it and they, um. They are going to address it. So if there's any other questions about that, um, you folks can let me know. Um, also. I spoke with the Army National Guard. Did you, did you get in touch with anybody from the Army National Guard?
Me personally, I did not. I did not, uh, reach out to anyone there. I believe that was with regards to, uh, Denise. And I think she did make an attempt to do so.
Okay, well, I do have a meeting next week, Monday, with the Public Affairs for the National Guard. And I did have a conversation with the, um, with the first sergeant who is over there. And he wants to attend. I sent him the neighborhood board minutes so that he could jump on or the agenda, my apologies. So that he could, um, be included. He has shared that he wants to be included. So once we meet and we'll build those relish- relationships, and if we have time to go to Bellows on Monday. Um, it's at one o'clock that we're supposed to go over there. If you're available, I'll, um, give you a, a call so that you can meet, meet them as well. And that's, that's all I have for now.
Mahalo Nui, thank you so much, Marine Corps Base Sawai, Kristi. Members, any questions for the Marine Corps Base? And McTab? Seeing no hands, anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no hands, I will question. Mahalo, Kristi, I appreciate the up, the, the updates there. Can you confirm, um, on behalf of the, the Army National Guard? Do you know or, or do we know how they've come about to their lease? Like, is, are they a sublease of McTab?
They are a sublease of, uh, the Marine Corps.
The Marine Corps, okay. Um, you know, I, Kristi, I, I was questioned by, um, an elder in our community. About a commitment in regards to public playing fields, you know, baseball field, et cetera. At the current facility space of the Army National Guard. There was some agreement or some understanding at least. In the community that when and when they went to and built that particular station. Um, that there would be public access to utilize fields on that base. Who do you think would be the right person for us to follow up? I don't, I cannot pinpoint when exactly that conversation took place, but I am happy to continue to press on it. And if there is access for fields, which we know is absolutely necessary, um. I do want to pursue a conversation there, uh, cause if it's a matter of commitment and just fully not living up to it, I think that's problematic. Do, do you have a recommendation for that?
Yes, I actually did speak with, um, the first sergeant. His name is Ryan, um, B A Q U I. And he actually grew up in Wamanalo. Um, he, I had said if there was a field and he. Uh, he said that he wasn't aware. Is there a field over there? That, do you guys know if there's a field in there for certain?
There is not a, a established field that I'm aware of, but there is a large section of flattened field space and grass. That I'm aware of.
Okay, cause I had, um, I had, um, asked him about that. And I said, you know, the community, if there was opportunity to utilize any space for sports activities. If that would be, um, an open conversation. And so he's definitely open to have that conversation. So Ryan, First Sergeant Ryan, that's the one I sent you the, his contact information. But yes, we are definitely gonna continue having this, this conversation.
Understood. And then just for the record, we still have Major Sean Dodge there? Is that correct in command?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
But I will follow up and ask about his name to see if, um, if he is not there present, if he has moved to another, um, location in Hawaii or just, or elsewhere.
Got it. And, um, Major Chen, if you're still on, I know we've gone back and forth on who's running the show at the, at that area, National Guard area. If you have an updated contact, if that can be emailed over, I would appreciate that as well. I know you sent some information previously, but I appreciate any follow-up as well there. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. It's Colonel Hodgson, but I'll, I'll send that email over to you.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. And that way we can get them connected and, and dialed in. So, uh, with, you know, with both of them, um, First Sergeant Ryan Bakui, Bakwai, Ba- Bakui, apologies on the name.
I think it's Bakui.
Bakui?
Bakui, yes.
Okay.
It's Bakui. They're, they're from, um, the north side of Waianaealo.
Got it. Um, I saw a hand up from Mr. Ted Ralston. Ted, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I was just, uh, answering the question that came up. There is, what I've seen over there at the National Guard place, a, a full-on athletic field with, uh, running track and, uh, uh, quite a bit of space.
Okay. I appreciate that confirmation. I, I look forward, um, to us kind of digging a little deeper with Kristi and with the team there. So Kristi, thank you for the follow-up there.
But of course.
Um, I, I will also acknowledge, you know, I will take you up on the invitation to meet with the delegation who will be coming here on behalf of RIMPAC. I strongly, strongly urge that the invitation be also sent to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands as well as to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, um, to send a rep- a representative out, uh, to be a part of the discussion and walk through. Uh, and, you know, I will also offer that invitation to any member of our, our board. Um, I don't know if, if we can extend the invitation currently to the members of the public. However, I do trust that the members of our board, including myself, will have, um, the respects and responsibility of reporting back to the public, uh, about those discussions. So Kristi, I, I, as I shared with you previously, I, I'm very concerned about RIMPAC's work, uh, and their, their time spent here in our community. And, and we will be addressing that in a much more specific way moving forward. But I do appreciate any information that you might be able to share with us about what type of work, um, training they will be, be doing uh, in regards to the ocean, in regards to the beach, you know, in line with, as we shared earlier, any of the public, uh, spaces that uh, will be closed, including the beaches where our nesting turtles, um, will have some space. So I look forward to us having that very, uh, important conversation to come.
I do too. We have a meeting this coming Friday and I should have some, um, more, um, detailed information. Uh, just to share one more quick note in regards to the turtles, because it has been asked at the other two neighborhood boards. Um, in any training that is going to be occurring off there prior to that training, they have staff that will be walking through to examine closely if there are any nesting. And if there is any, then, um, the training exercise will, will work around that nesting so that there's no disturbances.
I appreciate that. I, I will question, Kristi, will, will there be any archaeologists on site to walk through these training areas? Looking at any cultural resources that may become exposed? And, and, you know, to be very honest, does RIMPAC and why does RIMPAC not require any EA or EIS or cultural assessment upon their, their work here in our community?
I will ask those questions.
That would be great, cause the amount of, of impact that the community bears burden to with regards to these training events um, is not one that we want to continue to bear. You know, and I think it's fair for us to expect that the military, um, does their due diligence and meets these expectations. And if they are not in place yet, I'm happy to utilize this platform as a neighborhood board and start to create expectations for how they show up in our community. Because I think for generations, they just do what they like. And for generations, our community has had to suffer with that impact. And so it's a new day. And I think that we are going to be much more present in how, how RIMPAC is conducted here in Waianaealo. We can't speak for the rest of the Piaina, but for Waianaealo, uh, I look forward to challenging and pushing back on some of those things with this community. So I know you and I have spent some time discussing some of those things. And I appreciate you making yourself available to sit in the middle. Um, we will pursue challenging the Department of Defense in this way.
Understood. I will share those, um, comments and those thoughts and ways forward with our leadership.
I appreciate you very much. Thank you so much, Kristi.
Thank you.
Members, we recognize seven members present. If we could go back to our agenda item three, filling of vacancies. Uh, I would like to give us an opportunity to welcome, uh, any, uh, potential, uh, nominees into Sub District Nine, Old Homestead and Beach Homes to Makapuu. Do we have anyone willing to fill that position this evening? Please make your voice known. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will move forward. Sub District Eleven, Halea Puni. Do we have anyone here this evening that is interested in filling that position? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to one vacancy in the at-large position. Do we have anyone here from the public interested in filling that position?
I am.
Okay, and recognizing Jenna McKee, she, she, McKeg, excuse me, she did, uh, share a brief update about her interest in the community prior. So Jenna, we will, um, we will have that acknowledgement. Uh, members, will anyone recognize Jenna as a nominee for this position of at-large?
This Kuike is so moved.
Mahalo, Kuike. Kuike recognizes Jenna McKee as a nominee for the at-large position. Are there any other members interested in this position? Hearing none, uh, we recognize that Jenna McKee has, uh, offered to serve in the at-large position. She has been nominated by Kuike Kamakia O'Hello. This does not need a second, but members, you will be asked to, uh, voice your, uh, vote for, for Jenna. And if you could please speak her name. And Jenna, please confirm, is it McKee or McKeg?
It's McKeg.
McKeg, mahalo. So members, you will need your video on, uh, if you can during this vote. When Rachel calls your name, uh, you will need to speak, uh, McKeg as your vote, if you so choose to. Uh, and we will turn it over to Rachel at this time. So again, your cameras on, if you have the ability to do so.
Oh, when I call your name, please state the person that you would like to vote for. Okay, um, I'm just gonna look on through the list. Uh, Kanani? Artist?
Yes.
Just for McKeg.
Oh, sorry. Yes, vote for Jenna McKeg.
Thank you. Okay. Papillani?
McKeg.
Ted?
For McKeg.
You? Brenda isn't here. Kimiona?
McKeg.
Okay, Kuike?
Yeah, but my vote's for McKeg. Mahalo, Rachel.
Chastity?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm missing one person. Who did I not call?
Moyaka.
Okay, thank you.
McKeg.
Thank you. Okay, so that's with, uh, all seven members present for McKeg. Okay, so, um, Jenna, um, once you do the oath of office and return it back to me, that's when you can join the board. I already confirmed your address, that's why. Thank you.
Okay, mahalo.
So do we administer that at this time? Or will we be doing the offline at some other time and welcome her on later?
Um, let's see. Are you able to, I guess, send me a picture of the oath of office with your signature? Through email?
Uh, yes, I can. I put it that you sent me.
Okay, so I guess we can continue the, the meeting and then I'll announce that once I get it. And then you can say, okay, she's on the board.
Mahalo. Members, thank you so much for your diligence in that. Um, Jenna, we look forward to your serving as soon as we receive that oath of office on your behalf. Mahalo, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We're gonna move on to resident and community concerns, announcements and public reports. Uh, we have first on our agenda Bronson Ozama, Kainoa Ozama. Um, I've been following some of his story and, uh, invited him to share a little bit about his experience as a university student currently engaged in some very challenging and very concerning conversations regarding the administration there at the University of Hawaii. So, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Bronson or Kainoa, uh, for this presentation. We've allotted about ten minutes for this discussion, recognizing that it could go much further. Um, but Bronson, thank you so very much for making time for us this evening. Um, born of Ko'ala Poco, has served in various roles, uh, including as a youth commissioner on the Honolulu Youth Council. And so very adept and very involved in things in community. And he is an up-and-coming leader, already representing, uh, many different backgrounds. And so we're, we're very, very proud to have you here as a young leader here this evening, Bronson. Uh, we look forward to, uh, learning a little bit about what's going on from your perspective. So I'll turn it over to you and mahalo you for your time.
Yeah, no, thank you, um, so much, Chair, um, Kane. And thank you to the members of the board for allowing me the space to, um, share. So just a little background about my role at the university. So I just concluded my term as the, um, both the Associated Students of the University of Hawaii at Manoa President, so the student body president for undergraduates, as well as the chair for the Student Caucus to represent all the students in the UH system. Um, so this year, because we're, uh, you know, post-COVID, trying to revamp, um, a bit of student life. Um, but there has been like a renewed bit of advocacy, um, on the campuses, as well as particularly at the University of Hawaii at Manoa. Um, so one of the issues that we were involved with, um, we're involved with two major issues. One was the, um, selection process for the next University of Hawaii system president. Um, and then it, we also got involved with this thing known as the University Affiliated Research, um, Center Contract, where the UAR contract. It was kind of a, um, big thing back in two thousand and five, as well as we found in two thousand and thirteen, when students were expressing their concerns on the relationship the university has with the United States military, particularly the, um, branches it contracts with are the Navy and the Air Force. Um, and the UAR contract is what led to the formation of this thing called the Applied Research Laboratory, um, within the UH system that does, that basically enables it. It's basically a contract vehicle that allows, um, this thing called task ordered research to occur at the university. Whether it be, um, like the DOD has a particular need or the Navy research, you know, some examples of the research that's occurred. Um, and maybe Kristi can share if she knows a little bit about it, but like they look at the, um, wave generation energy on Mokapuu, um, coral restoration, I believe in, um, in Waikiki possibly. I don't know the exact location. Um, as well as the Maui Supercomputer Site, which the University of Hawaii President is a principal investigator on. Um, as well as, um, which ties to the Haleakala Telescope, not the proposed one that I know of. But the, um, Daniel Kainoa, as well as the currently up to decommissioned UKIR telescope on Monaka. So knowing that the university was, has these roles that are, um, that allow this task ordered research, some of the things, the students, we reaffirmed our position that we want the contract to end, cause there's a lack of transparency about it. Um, even on the website, the research UAR has been doing over the past ten years, at least since its renewal of a more recent contract back in, I think, twenty thirteen time, it's still not transparent. Um, the other thing that, um, the other thing that's been concerning too is there was a lot of, there was no intent to receive public input on the proposed seven hundred fifty million dollar contract that we ha- renewal expected, that we haven't seen much detail on in terms of the research they anticipate on doing, um, and how this role also serves the community. If the Navy and the Air Force are benefiting from our public university and the research it engages in, I would imagine if you're gonna have the contract vehicle, why aren't we using that vehicle to also empower our communities to deal with issues like coconut rhinoceros beetle and so many other things? If it enables the Navy to be able to say, hey, we have an issue and the university can so willingly accept it. Um, so for me, the, there's a bit of a big gap in terms of how does the community benefit from the research that's occurring at the UAR? But at the same time, how to does, um, our students benefit from it? Um, and that's where, um, I can share a little bit, um, more details on too. But when it comes to, um, some of the things with admin and, you know, I, I know some people like how they run these things. They tend to silo, um, exactly how the university not necessarily gets managed, but how things, um, get done. But it's, it's concerning how we can have a seven hundred fifty million dollar contract renewal, um, be, um, pushed and prioritized. And we still haven't met the basic needs of students. When we recognize like the dorm situation, which is quite a bit in the paper. Um, not to mention, um, some of the other issues that we've been having, such as the privatization of the dorms. And even accountability in terms of, at least for the Manoa campus, um, how tuition and fees are utilized, um, which was also a problem for us, cause there were some proposals where tuition, they wanted to utilize it for athletic events. But, you know, by textbook definition on dictionaries, tuition is for instruction. Um, so are we, are we getting the, um, are we getting the instruction that, that we paid for? Which I'll circle back to the, um, some of the issues that we found with the research is that some faculty, um, because we're an R-one institution, which is research-based at Manoa, you know, a lot of our students, we pay for our service that sometimes we aren't, that quite often we're not provided, particularly in the sciences. Cause our professors are doing research. So it gets delegated to our graduate assistants, um, and or to, you know, one, uh, some of the TAs. So we're not getting the professor that we initially paid for now. So it's, it's just a matter of, again, what are the priorities that we're having at this public institution? And where, uh, is the community also gonna voice its concerns as we're transitioning to the next president of what we, the role we'd like to see our public institution, um, play? Cause research tends, as we're seeing it, is a big priority. But also to what about the education that our students are receiving? Where is that priority? Cause the things we're paying for, whether it be the dorms, whether it be our, our education, those aren't, um, being provided in the quality that, um, not only that we'd like it, but at the same time, in the quality that it should be expected, cause some of these facility issues are be, will, well below national standards. But, um, I'll, I'll kind of close there if you guys have any questions as well. But a big thing for us currently is the UAR contract. Yeah, mahalo.
Bronson, thank you very much for, um, the, the presentation and making the time to come out and kind of share what you folks are experiencing in this realm. Um, I do want to invite this conversation into the next committee meeting with the Education Committee. It has piqued my interest, because like you shared, the public has a right to these conversations, I believe, in this public-facing institution. And so I would like to invite you to that, uh, i- in June, our committee meeting, and I'll converse with you, um, offline. But, um, we're not gonna take any questions for this, this evening. We just wanted to hear the information and certainly welcome the conversation to continue. Um, mahalo for your leadership and mahalo, Nui, for making time for our community this evening. Thank you very much, Bronson. Members, we're gonna move on. We have, um, we've listed the Department of Boating and Recreation. I just want to make sure that they are gonna be present here. Uh, Tony, are we gonna have their presentation or with, with your governor's update? Or do we want to take that now?
Oh, no, um, I just wanted to update you. They, they weren't able to attend tonight's meeting. But they, um, they'll be able to, to, uh, provide us updates and more information at our upcoming meeting.
Okay, is that go for the Department of Conservation and Resource Enforcement as well?
Yes, both of them.
We will note that. We're gonna, uh, ask at this time if there are any resident community concerns and We will note that. We're gonna uh ask at this time if there are any resident community concerns, announcements or public reports from any other members on the the call? Any public facing members? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we're gonna press on. We are gonna start with our councilwoman Esther Kiaaina. Mahalo Nui, council member for being here this evening. I hope you are safe where you are.
Eh aloha, everybody. Um, I, like many others, were was stuck on tra- in traffic. It took me four hours to get home from Honolulu Halei to Kailua and I actually ran out of gas. But I was able to make it safely to Kalahill Hillside and so I had to uh have a friend bring me some gas. But I I wanted to follow up, of course, on the continuing concern by residents of um electric bikes or e-bikes. I know that with regard to vehicles, uh, some residents have also expressed concerns uh on public beaches. And and those are already, unless they're authorized, those um, those are prohibited. So, but I want to talk further about um electric bikes of the the state of Hawaii regulates electric bikes or e-bikes, the same as bikes, bicycles. And um, it has um it has granted the city uh the authority under the statewide traffic code to regulate um either bicycles or e-bikes. And as such, I asked the Office of Council Services to uh flush the issue out. So I think for the community, what needs to be considered uh with 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 with, which is what I'm looking at and I'm seeking mana'au is whether or not you would like to prohibit e-bikes in city parks and ri- rights of ways? Second, would you like to prohibit on city streets and roadways? Or third, would you simply want to regulate uh the speed of the uh e-bikes? I am meeting in the near future, I believe next week, with both the Hawaii Bicycling League, who who uh who of course are adamantly opposed to uh the prohibition of e-bikes anywhere, as well as the city's Department of Transportation Services. I understand that there were efforts at the state level and maybe Representative Martin and Senator Lee could talk about it, but I understand um that those measures did not uh move forward in the state. So uh, this is something that I'm actively considering because I have heard about uh concerns expressed by um residents um throughout the Windward Side. And so um, I just wanted to um say that I'm s- I'm seeking people's mana'au. And just lastly, I know everyone sees the graphics on the Summer Fund Program and I was, I don't know if uh Director Thielen talked about it, but I need to let you know that the Summer Fund for our youth can only be successful if we get uh staff. And so I need to uh put out a keheia for um those who are college age or seniors in high school, if you know of anyone. We really needed last year. Um, a lot of uh programs, including on the Windward Side, were um hindered because we did not have enough staff. And and um Irene will put in the chat box the link for those who are interested in um in um applying to be Summer Fund staff. And of course, uh, the deadline uh for applying is in the near future. I'll I'll, I I know we put it on for people to sign up for Summer Fund, but I'll put it on my um, my Facebook again. And that's my report, Chair.
Mahalo Nui, council member. Uh, happy to hear that you got home safe, at least um considering the circumstances. So mahalo Nui. Members, we will take questions for the council member. We have Ted Ralston. Ted, you have a question for the council member?
Yeah, I'm just battling away here to the muted microphone. So sorry about that. Councilwoman. A couple of months ago, we had the meeting in Waianaealo at the gym regarding the uh restoration of the structures at the park. And um, there was a lot of uh really good feedback from the community. And I I just wonder if uh if that's had any effect on the designers or on the program plan for that uh building rebuild.
You know, uh, regrettably, I do not have um I I I do not have knowledge of the decision making. That probably would have been uh better directed at Director Thielen. Uh, for my part, what I'm doing is uh making sure that all of the funds necessary are in the budget and they are. So I don't have an answer to that, Ted. Um, Irene, uh, my staff who's online, we will follow up uh to find out if in fact the consultants and the Department of Parks and Recreation have um made a final determination on the parameters of the structures. And so I will get that to you and share it with Chair Connie as well as yourself.
Thank you very much.
Mahalo, council member for that. Any other questions for the council member this evening, members? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Do we have anyone from the public for council member Kiaaina? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Uh, council member, we will take your recommendation on e-bikes into committee and we'll give you some feedback from committee. Uh, and then we'll also make sure that we post it for our community on our social media pages and just encourage them to share them mana'au uh with their council, with the office, uh as well as in the meeting.
Thank you. And then what I will do as well is after my uh meeting with the Hawaii Bicycling League as well as with the City Department Parks and Recreation, I could at least give you some uh ground intelligence on what the thinking is because I understand that the league is also meeting with the uh State Department of Transportation. Um, I've already stated where their, what their position is and I'll I'll find out where the city is thinking. Nevertheless, as a policymaker, my job is to respond to the concerns of the community. And as such, while I value everybody's input, um, the community's concerns and their safety is going to be paramount in my decision making.
Mahalo for that. Ted Ralston, you have a second question?
I do. Uh, I was gonna ask, are motorized uh skateboards, motorized scooters and other devices that can suddenly appear in front of you in traffic, are they considered, are being considered along with the e-bike question?
You know, that's a good question. My first uh response would be no. Uh, they are in a different category, but if you don't mind, uh, that's what we're gonna be talking about next week, uh, because the bicycling league has been having challenges and and so part of their um, what they're looking at is to educate people. They are for better enforcement. And so they believe if there was better regulation of uh e-bikes, not to be confused with other um other um, you know, devices like you were talking about, maybe people have a better understanding of it. So I'm I'm in the learning phase. But what I will do for you is um, maybe I will uh get you a list of all of the different types of uh other motorized, um, whatever you want to call it. I don't know what the um what the, whether it be um a scooters or or a skateboards. That is a good question and that has to be part of our due diligence. So let me uh try to get a list for that so we understand the categories. Does that make sense?
I appreciate that very much.
Yes, thank you so much. And thank you, Chair.
Mahalo, council member. Thank you so much for your service. We look forward to uh continuing to work with you. Members, we're gonna move on. Uh, we have Senator Lee's office. Anyone here from Senator Lee's office this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to our state representative, Representative Lisa Martin. Thank you for making time this evening. The time is yours.
Mahalo. Um, aloha, everybody. So um Lisa Martin from uh the House of Representatives, uh representing you folks there. We finished our session recently, a little over a week ago, and I have to say that it was a tremendously successful session, I would say, as opposed to a year ago where I left kind of depressed. Um, but this time things went much better. And um, as Chair of Human Services, I was very focused on issues around Kupuna, Keke, which held welfare service, um, our homeless and disabled. And a lot of good things happened. So that was um, it made me feel like uh it was a worthwhile year. I wanted to, there's a lot to say, but I've tried to think uh to make it short. I just wanted to mention some of the budget items that are specific to Waianaealo that got funded. So for Kailua High School, um, we have ten point five million dollars for the design and construction of athletic facilities and related improvement. And that is a little bit to be determined exactly how it would be used, but the priority items are the baseball field, the boys' baseball field that was funded uh before my time. It was funded for some repairs. There's big cracks in the field that you could definitely put your whole foot in and twist your ankle for our rising stars. And um, that funding was lapsed because it wasn't spent. And the reason it wasn't spent was concern over Title Nine. And um, as you know, we have to spend a comparable amount on girl's sports as on boy's sports. And so there was some uneven spending. And um, so I think we will do the baseball field and then also seek out a, an appropriate project to support girl's sports. Um, the softball field is actually in good shape, but it doesn't have to be like that. It could be the girls' locker room or something that that will um raise up our young women athletes. And then in addition, the other part is um, you may be aware that there is a problem with the football field. It is sagging in the middle because there is a stream that flows over from the correctional, the women's correctional facility next door. And that is why the bleachers are condemned. So um, this will be to do the work to figure out how we can fix the drainage problem. And then depending on the scope of that problem, either there may be enough money to do the work or there may be enough money to start the work and we'll need to to finish the funding in a subsequent year. The lights, which is a separate issue, the lights have been out, which is why graduation is not at school and they have not been able to have home games there. Um, and that is being addressed with um short, in the short term, with some kind of Band-Aid exterior lighting on the existing poles, which hopefully will work. They um they made the existing poles safe through welding and et cetera. Um, and they would just do the wiring on those existing poles, but not through them, just on the outside. And they won't know till they try it, if it works, but if it does, that will be for the coming school year. And then for the school year after that, they will actually replace all the poles. And that money is not a special C I P for um Kailua High School. That is coming out of the D O E's general maintenance funds, which is wonderful. I have never seen them use those funds for any of our schools in the past. So I was glad to see that this project rose to the level that they thought it was worthy. Um, so that that is in the works. Um, but it will take a long time. Everything takes a long time. Um, the other thing that we got funded was for Waianaealo Elementary and Intermediate School. As you know, they're coming up on their hundredth anniversary, which I think makes them one of the older schools on our island. And so we have three million dollars to paint the exterior of the school and do some landscaping work and other improvements that were wanted by the school staff so that they can shine for their anniversary. Um, we also have two point five million for the Waianaealo Irrigation Systems Improvements. That's the system that runs up in the mountains and brings the water down to the reservoir for our farmers. And um, there's a lot of water loss right now and having improvements in the system will um conserve water and will be better. And then for G I A, we did have a um, I'm not sure if people are familiar with the Napono Nona Ohana Program from Partners in Development that works with um families and early education, family strengthening. And that was a hundred thousand dollars for them to continue their work in Waianaealo. Um, so that's the money issues. We did um gosh, we've passed so much legislations. I would rather a- answer questions about things that are of interest to you folks instead of talk about things that might not be of interest. But um, I do want to say that I appreciate this body for stepping up and I appreciate Councilmember Kiaaina for stepping up on the bill to um dramatically change our residential zoning and allow subdivisions and up to four units. Um, it did pass in the end, but what passed was an incredibly modified version that is much less scary. So there's nothing about subdivision. And it now would require counties to allow two A D Us on each property, but it would allow the county's restrictions on size and character, which before it did not. And um, it also gives Oahu the flexibility to determine what parts of the island are included in that, as long as they meet certain goals for numbers of homes. And also um include the transit corridors, which Waianaealo is not part of. So we'll, we'll wait and see what, you know, how that comes to pass, but it may not have a big impact on Waianaealo in the end. And I appreciate your engagement. And with that, I am open to questions. But I do want to mention, there is one uh, because I think I see artists here still. There is one special bill that we managed to pass at the very, very last minute um, that to fund a wonderful program at W C C that trains um both students and people already working in entry level mental health care jobs um in mental he- healthcare work. And um, that successful program, um, they have funding for two positions to take it statewide because it's an online program. And that's a really exciting thing for our state because we are in such need of um mental health care and that allows us to train people that are already in that field and they know what they're getting into. Um, so they're likely to stick with it. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Representative, thank you so much for your advocacy and support of our community. We really appreciate your hard work in this session. Members, any questions for the representative? Seeing and hearing none, anyone from the public? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Rep, I I did want to ask, you know, I I'm so thankful that you um have pushed this water system upgrade in Waianaealo. Do we know if it's gonna be done by the state or is that gonna be an Army Corps project? And do we know what kind of impacts there could be, if any, to some surrounding uh cultural sites that might be above Mahalua, um, which we're very well about?
Um, I do not know. Um, I know that it will be contracted out by the Department of Agriculture, but I don't know to who they will, to whom they will contract it out. But I can, I can inquire and um, and I can also ask what kind of precautions will be taken.
In in your um understanding currently, do you know if it's a full system or like redo or are they just gonna go in and clear it all out?
It's it's improvements. I think there might be some junctions where they um I I, if you're familiar, it's mostly open, right? But there are some junctions where um things get caught and jammed up. So I'm not sure exactly how I did go up there to check it out. Um, it was a while ago though. Okay, I can't remember what they said they're gonna do, but but basically it's to keep the water flowing and um yeah, and to, there's some areas where they're getting a lot of siltation and blockage. So it's it's not a new system, it's improvements to the existing system. So I do not believe they'll be doing any like new footprint. So I I I don't think there is a lot of potential for damage, but it's worth asking.
And do you believe in this experience um that the improvements, will that require any kind of forward-facing community input opportunities? Or to ta- to take a look at scope of work or anything like that, do you know?
Um, I can ask. I wouldn't think so because I don't think they're building anything new. I think they're just trying to make what they have functional again. But um, but again, I can, I can ask and I can um email you the information I find out and then you can share it as you see fit.
I appreciate it, yeah, because the the system is quite comprehensive in in that it flows and runs across the entirety of the valley floor. So I'm just curious to what extent they're gonna be caring for it, if it's just the Mahalua area or anywhere else. But yeah, I am hopeful that we get to see the scope of work when it becomes present and I look forward to any updates you might be able to share.
I will send that for sure. I will send that for sure. And I, and I did want to, there's one thing that was so interesting to hear from our UH student. Um, is he still here with us? Bronson? Yes, Bronson is there. Um, I think this afternoon I went and visited the um, program that you were very concerned about. Um, and I was very interested in speaking with them because one of the things that they do, the head of that program, her background is actually um, dealing with underwater munitions, which is something a concern the community had raised in association with the Rab. And um, I did not know this, others may already know this, but um, about a hundred miles south of Oahu, in very, very deep water, a lot, a large quantity of mustard gas bombs were dumped purposefully to, as a storage technique when they started leaking, started corroding and they didn't want them to leak on land, so they dumped them in the ocean a long time ago. So she heard job, her work included deep, that's like very deep water, like a thousand feet. Um, investigating that and trying to figure out, you know, what should be done. Her analysis is that those have all leaked a long time ago and that would be best to not disturb them. Because they're actually, is probably, yeah, they're, they're, they are very much falling apart underwater. They're corroded and they have, the pressure, the water pressure probably caused them to crack and leak quite soon after they were dumped. Um, but she's also interested in shallow water exploration. And they have three different technologies to do that. And um, and they would like to um, are trying to become a test area for the technologies as a way to have companies pay for them to use the technologies in order to test them and thereby map out and find any sort of things that might be around in the shallow areas on Oahu. And so I was very interested in having them, you know, looking into the possibility of having them do that in Waimea Nalo Bay um, and Kaileua Bay, Alani Kai. Because we, you know, there's concerns, the community is so active in those areas, fishing, diving, swimming, boating. So anyways, that conversation has started just today. And um, it's something that I wanted to engage uh, you folks, engage DLNR. Um, it wouldn't necessarily be on military land, though we would like to do it in front of um, bellows. And so we want to um, engage our military counterparts as well. So anyways, that's something that could be starting and um, they also showed me the, the work they're doing with the coral breakwaters. And you know, I find that work very exciting and very positive. Um, so I'm not sure if there's other types of work that Bronson and his um, colleagues might be concerned about. I don't know all the things they do, but it does seem that some of the things they do are actually quite positive.
Mahalo for sharing that. We look forward to digging deeper. Um, I think there's value in, in both perspectives that have been shared this evening surrounding some of that work. I, I will say, not to take us in a tangent, but it is very concerning that we are going to just be okay with the, the deposit of mustard gas bombs and that we're not gonna address it. And I, I feel like to address it.
Yeah, it would, this is something that this woman has really spent a decade of her life on. And, and wants to do, yeah, it's, it, it would be best to see her presentation, right? They tested um, water, sand deposits, marine things that are growing on, you know, right around there to see if they are contaminated. They found extremely low levels of contamination, you know, measured in parts per billion. And um, and in, they tried not to touch the actual munitions. But when they accidentally touched one with one of their robots, right? They're doing this work with, with um, you know, deep water submersibles, um, it just fell apart. And you know, it was on video and um, but they have, you know, looked at them close up and, and gone and explored them visually. And they see that they are cracked. And so they feel that they probably leaked soon after they were deposited and the, the water pressure cracked them at that time. And so moving them now, um, which I'm not arguing one side or the other, I'm just sharing what I learned. Um, they feel that they are, they will not stay intact, they will break apart. And that they actually, yeah, they, they would not be able to contain anything that they might still have in them, though they think most of it has probably seeped out.
Understood. I appreciate that sharing and yeah, let's, let's definitely get them involved. And I think um, I would be very much interested in pursuing a course of action. Um, I don't know if a hundred miles off of our shore falls within our jurisdiction, but I would be happy to start with the federal level and start asking those questions there. So Representative, I appreciate your service. Mahalenui for being here this evening. Uh, and thank you. And I, I hope you folks are also safe where you folks are at as well.
Sen is stuck. He's on Kapaa Kori Road and he is spending the night there. Not on the road, but he's at work and he has to stay the night.
Wow. Hola. Let's hope everything settles soon. Mahalo. Members, we're gonna move on. Congresswoman Jill Takuta's office. Do we have anyone here from the Congresswoman's office? Hearing and seeing none, I do want to acknowledge and just put it on the record that um, you know, we will look at inquiring with the Congresswoman uh, about the information shared by Rep. Martin about this, this disposal site. I think it's important for us to have the discussion. Um, it also brings up a conversation about Boam, um, which I think is important for us to make sure we kind of bring to light. You know, it's a, a discussion that I, I want to ask if we can invite um, Boam to our uh, meeting in some point, i- in some point uh, to talk about their kulianna and what they do. Um, I think it's important. This is the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. Uh, they occupy kulianna, which basically, in this particular case, um, they have kulianna to the, the seafloor, right? The seafloor, et cetera. So I want to learn a little bit more about them. I'm going to introduce them to the community and I want us to be able to have some really tough discussions with them. Uh, there was recently a proposal put out, um, which I think is of concern. And so we'll post that information on our Facebook page and our Instagram page for folks to follow up on. But um, we want to follow very closely what Boam does. And so I'm just making a note for that on record for Congresswoman Jill Takuta uh, to inquire with Boam if we can have a presentation and then to call forth an inquiry to this disposal sites um, that's been identified uh, in this research work. So hearing no other comments or questions and seeing no other hands up for the Congresswoman, I'm gonna move on um, to our board business. Members, we have several items before the board this evening. I just want to stop and ask if Jenna has been able to submit that document over so we can recognize eight members. Jenna, are you able to provide that to Chris, uh, to Rachel? Jenna, are you still present? Okay, there you are.
Can you hear me?
I can, yes, no worry.
Okay, we're sorry. Sending it over.
Okay. Um, and, and the reason for that is I want to make sure that we can acknowledge you as a voting member, if anything. But as soon as Rachel gets that, we're just gonna proceed to the rest of the agenda um, until that time, so. Uh, Rachel, when that becomes available, then we will, we'll acknowledge that. Okay, members, we're moving on to the approval of regular board meeting minutes. This is for Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the board meeting minutes as written?
Yeah, so moved.
Quickie with the main motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Uh, can you identify yourself?
Kapio Lani.
Mahalo, Pio. Thank you. Kapio Lani with the second. Members, it's been moved and seconded. We are in discussion. Any discussion on the approval of Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes? Seeing no hands and hearing no voices, we'll close the discussion. It's been moved and seconded, members. We are going to take a roll call vote to establish our voting quorum. Uh, and then we can move on from there. So when your name is called by Rachel, our NCO assistant, please vote aye. Yes, you support the approval, nee or nee, uh, aole. If you do not, or kanalua if you abstain. Um, please make sure your cameras are on, members, and I will turn it over to Rachel. Mahalo, Rachel.
Um, Lordis?
Hi.
Rata? Rata?
Oh, aye, sorry, I couldn't hear.
Kapio Lani?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
And then Ted, are you able to have your camera on?
I tried.
You tried, okay. And then, Shmiona?
Aye.
Kay?
But if you said my name, my vote is aye.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Chastity?
Aye.
Right, okay. That's with all seven board members, the approval minutes has passed.
Mahalo. And then the um, paperwork has been sent in via email, Rachel. I can confirm that it has been signed and dated as of today. So I'll let you recognize her when you're able to pull that up.
And then, am I cc on that email or on the email with you?
You sure are.
Okay, maybe just me. I think I just got it.
Members, while we're confirming that, we're gonna move on to item B. The July Neighborhood Board Meeting is originally scheduled uh, for Tuesday, July ninth, excuse me. There is a conflict, I should say, May, June, July in scheduling with regards to the Waimea Nalo Library. So there's a question right now if we want to hold the meeting on Monday, July eighth, as originally scheduled, but the physical location to be at Kapala Mahale? Or if we would like to uh, reschedule the meeting to Tuesday, the eighth, Tuesday, the ninth, excuse me, and host it at the Waimea Nalo Public Library? So we have two options for the July Neighborhood Board Meeting. Uh, is there a recommendation by the board to move it to Tuesday, July ninth? And schedule it with the library or keep it on Monday, July eighth and utilize Kapala Mahale?
Yes, Quickie.
Kuike?
I recommend the second option.
Keeping it at Kapala Mahale?
No, second option to move it to the library.
Okay.
July ninth.
And move it to Tuesday, July ninth, understood. So there is a motion to move, uh, reschedule the meeting for July to Tuesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-four, utilizing the Waimea Nalo Public Library. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take chastity on that. If we can, members, just make sure your voice is, um, your name is, is spoken. So Kuike with the main motion to um, reschedule our July meeting, twenty twenty-four to Tuesday, the ninth, at the Waimea Nalo Public Library. It's been seconded by chastity. Members are in discussion. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah.
Quickie? Yep.
Because it's the beginning of the, the new calendar year, I think it's very important that all current um, board members are present in person. That's why I made the, you know, the opt it for the second option to move it to a much more accessible location for our members of this board, number thirty-two, Waimea Nalo. So mahalo, Chair, I yield back the time.
Mahalo for your comment. Any other comments or discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna close discussion, members, when your name. Actually, we recognize, do we recognize eight members total now?
Yep, I got, yep, I got it.
Okay, we want to congratulate Jenna McKig on her uh, introduction and, and uh, being a part of our Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board at the at-large position. You will now be uh, allowed to vote this evening. And, and please do not feel pressured to vote yea or nee, um, if you do not feel inclined to do so. Um, but at this time, we will recognize eight members present for this vote. Members, we are voting to support the rescheduling of the July Neighborhood Board Meeting from Monday, July eighth to Tuesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-four, seven PM, and utilizing the Waimea Nalo Public Library as a physical location. When your name is called, uh, please answer with aye, yes, you support. Aole, you do not support, or nee, and abstain, or kanalua if you are unsure. Uh, we will take it over. Quickie?
Point of clarification, will, will this still, will this meeting in July be a hybrid meeting?
You know, yeah, it, it brings up a good question. Um, July is our reconvening, that's when we kind of start. We will have to determine at that July meeting whether or not we will continue with hybrid or not. Hybrid has been offered. Um, we will have to have that discussion then.
Yeah, mahalo for the clarification, Chair. I yield back.
Mahalo. Um, so again, members, you will be voting to support uh, the rescheduling of the July meeting to Tuesday, July ninth, the public space being the Waimea Nalo Public Library. When your name is called, please vote accordingly. Uh, I will turn it over to Rachel. Mahalo, gang.
Start with Lordis?
Aye.
Rata?
Aye.
Kapio Lani?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I, I keep cutting out, so if you said me, my vote is aye.
Thank you. Uh, Chastity?
Aye.
And Jenna?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we have all board members voting for that. It has been adopted.
Rachel, will you be scheduling with the library?
So we actually reserved the date just for backup.
Okay. Uh, members, similarly, we're gonna look at the September meeting date. This is um, for September. Again, there is an issue with scheduling at the physical location. The original date is Monday, September ninth, at Kapala Mahale. Or we could schedule Tuesday, September tenth, at the Waimea Nalo Public Library. Is there a motion uh, for a decision, a recommendation?
Yeah, it's Quickie.
Quickie?
Same recommendation as the previous motion to move the date uh, to the following Tuesday to be held at the Waimea Nalo Public Library.
Mahalo, the motion is to reschedule the September meeting to the tenth, Tuesday, at Waimea Nalo Public Library. Is there a second?
Kapio Lani, I second.
Mahalo, Kapi, thank you for that. Members, it's been moved and seconded. We're in discussion. Any discussion? Uh, and again, I, I will highlight that the reason why we're having these discussions now is because there are conflicts with the scheduling at the library. And so we want to try and get as many dates um, confirmed with them as possible. Currently, that is the public choice um, for the board. Uh, if there are other public spaces that become available, we certainly will welcome, you know, some discussion come July as well. Yeah. But hearing any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will close the discussion. Members, recognizing that we are recommending the uh, rescheduling of the September meeting to Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, at the Public Library, Waimea Nalo Public Library. It's been moved by Kuike, seconded by Kapio Lani. Uh, members, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Mahalo, members, are there any nays? Please make your voice known. Hearing none, are there any abstentions? Please make your voice known. Mahalo, members, we will recognize eight members present, so eight ayes, zero nays and zero abstentions. Thank you so very much for your time there. Menu, uh, I, item D is the November Board Meeting. Um, there is a recommendation to provide three new dates for the NCO to check for availability at the Kapala Mahale due to the Veteran Affair Holiday. So. due to the Veteran Affair Holiday. So I wanna make sure.
Question.
Right. I noted it as Thursday, but it should be Monday, yeah? Monday, the eleventh, is our normal. Yeah, excuse the typo, gang. We are talking about Monday, November eleventh.
Here, um, so November eleven hasn't been listed on there because that's a holiday. So we couldn't, we couldn't do that anyway, so the, the choices are, uh, fit to November seventh at the Wa Manalo Library. Or if you wanted at the Kapala Mahale, um, I suggested to give me three, give three dates because in case it's not available, and we go by, you know, first favorite, you know.
Mahalo for clarifying. So, your recommendation, Rachel, for us to consider this evening is to move it to the first week on Thursday, November seventh, at the Public Library? Or check for availability on three dates as the dates are listed there?
Yeah, so the dates listed on the bottom are not available because I have other neighborhood board meetings as well, too.
Okay. So I guess the only recommendation for us to consider right now is if we wanna consider moving it to Thursday, November seventh. I don't wanna get too far in the weeds and throwing out all kind different dates for the sake of time and for our sanity. Members, if, yeah, Kuke?
Um, I, I move that, um, we accept the recommendation by Rachel and then have our November meeting on the seventh, to be held at Wa Manalo Public Library.
Mahalo, Kuke. Members, it's been motion to reschedule our November meeting to Thursday, November seventh, at seven P M. at the Wa Manalo Public Library. Is there a second?
Second.
Ted Ralston, is that you?
It is.
Mahalo. So it's been moved and seconded, members, we are in discussion. Any discussion on the re- rescheduling of the November meeting to November seventh, Thursday? Okay, hearing no discussion, members, you will be asked to take a vote if you support this motion to reschedule our November meeting to Thursday, the seventh of November, the Wa Manalo Public Library. Your vote will follow as aye, yes, aole, no, or kanalua, undecided. Um, anyone who is kanalua, make your voice known. Any kanalua, any abstentions? Hearing none, any nays, any aole, please make your voice known. Hearing none, recognizing eight members present, we will acknowledge eight ayes, zero noes, and zero abstentions. Mahalo for that, members. We will reschedule the November meeting to Thursday, the seventh, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four, excuse me, at the Public Library. Mahalo. Uh, we're gonna press on, members, recognizing the time at nine eighteen, we have a three-absence, um, letter regarding Kinani Gramberg. Does the board wish to, uh, declare the seat vacate or to, um, just continue to have Kinani serve when she's available to do so? Any recommendation to vacate the seat?
Real question.
Yes, please.
Has there been any, um, interest from the community that lives in that district?
Um, I have not heard of anyone currently that has, um, sought that particular seat. Uh, particularly as Kinani has served in that seat for, um, some time currently. Um, I'm sure if we were to make it available, there could potentially be, but, um, yeah, I, I don't have anyone that's knocking on my door right now for that seat.
Right, and then I've, I've a few follow-up questions. How long has she, ha- has she served on, on, um, this board in this capacity?
Um, I don't have that information on me at this time, but it has been for a few years now.
Yeah, was it from two thousand nineteen or twenty?
I don't have that answer. Uh, Rachel, would you have that answer?
I know, but I can probably look it up.
Actually, it might be in our Google Drive, Rachel. Remember that document you sent?
Oh, thank you, I see.
We can take a look, Kuke. Is there a second question?
Yeah, um, has, has she indicated any reason why, you know, her involvement um, in, in this capacity has slowed down?
She has, uh, indicated to me personally, yes.
Okay. And then.
And she's been very upfront about it with me, um. I don't know that I wanna share those conversations, um, lately.
Please don't share those conversations. Has, has she indicated in any way that, um, she may, may consider for whatever reason or circumstance, yeah, stepping down from, from this position?
She has not.
Okay. Well, that, that sums up all of my questions, Chair, and, um, yeah, I, I, I'd recommend that we give her additional grace and, um, you know, we circle back to this conversation next month.
Mahalo. So the recommendation I hear from Kuke, Kuke, correct me if, if, if I'm wrong, is that we will not take action on this item, uh, this evening?
That, that's, that's what my heart is telling me, that's what my Na'ao is telling me. Uh, you know, and of course, um, that, that is my individual opinion, you know, um, so, mahalo, Chair, for recognizing that.
Mahalo, Mayata?
Sorry, could you just clarify, um, so what the board does, I, I'm sorry, I don't really know the rules. So what the board does is we write a letter if somebody's absent three times to vacate their seat?
Good, good question. So what happens is if there is an absence of three absences in the term year, um, there, the individual is sent a letter of said action. Uh, and they are asked if they wish to remain on the board or vacate their seat, resign from the board. Um, they are given public notice, they are sent a letter, um, and then it becomes a part of the board's kuleana. We have the, the kuleana here to vacate the seat, which we've never, ever taken action on in all the years that I've been here. Um, recognizing that people have lives and things get difficult from time to time, and it doesn't demonstrate anyone's lack of commitment, it just simply means things are not where it is needing to be in order for them to serve. And so the board has to make a decision unless the individual has um, submitted that letter back, recognizing that, A, they wanna be, uh, continue to serve, then they would come before the board like tonight and share with us why we should allow that. And or if they resigned, then they would submit, uh, their resignation. So an example, if I can share, was at our last meeting, Auntie Mabel, um, also received that, and she made the recognition, uh, to resign prior to. Yeah, and so without hearing from Kinani, um, this evening, we, we are forced to take action on it. And the action is ours to choose. We can ask to vacate the seat, at which point we would do so. Or we can, as Kuke expressed, give grace and, and recognize her hard work, and just say, when you're ready, come back.
Oh, can I jump in on that?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I know for the three absences, that's when we send the letter. Um, if you guys decide a motion not to vacate the seat, then we could do that, too. Um, the next time that we'll send a letter again will be the fifth time, and then it's the odd numbers.
Mahalo for that. We've never gotten to the fifth time, so in our experiences, um, so that's new news to me.
Clarification?
Yep.
So come July, no matter if we just signed on and submitted everything, come July, end of July, each board member is gonna have to basically reinstate their position on this board. Is that accurate, Rachel?
Oh, so all the board members will be present still under life. Um, and your absence, um, a lot of absences will be, um, restart, too. So, perhaps, you know, like.
Right.
Uh, we.
So, let me be more, let me be more specific in my question, okay? Given the current circumstance, Kinani already missed three. Yeah, if she not show up next month, that's four. If she not show up July, then she cannot re-up her membership on this board. So does that automatically default into, as, um, basically, uh, default resigning from the board? Like, an automatic vacate of her position? Because we technically serve eleven months out of the year. Yeah, and if we don't re-up every year, and re-up, you know, re-establish our commitment to the, the, the following calendar year or, um, fiscal year, then does that result in an automatic vacating of that seat?
I, I, I think I understand what you're trying to say, cuz like, when July comes, and she already had her, the safer, she does get absent in the next month, that's really four, but when July comes, it restarts, right? And then if she's absent. I guess it sounds like you, the board will have to decide whether they wanna give her the chance and hope that she, you know, does come during that time, or do, or vacate the seat.
Okay, so let, let me be even more specific. What does the rules of the Neighborhood Board Commission say if the member is absent come July, when the seat restarts? Because if they're not there in July, at the beginning of the fiscal year, to establish their commitment to the following, you know, to the remaining of the fiscal year. I apologize, my internet's running and out, that's why my videos, I, that's not me. My hands are here, I promise. So sorry, um, but so, what does the rules of the Neighborhood Board Commission say about that?
Okay, let me pull up. In the meantime, do you guys wanna move forward to the next? Um.
Agenda item?
Yeah, yeah, why pull it up? You wanna wait?
Chair, I, I yield back to you.
Okay, we'll let, we'll let, um, Rachel look up the specifics in the Neighborhood Board Plan, and then we can come back to that conversation, Kuke. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to the Parks and Recreation Committee's recommendation to support the Honolulu City Council Resolution twenty-four dash five one. This urges the Department of Parks and Recreation to make official requests for use of State Department of Education facilities and the State Board of Education to ensure availability of school grounds for recreational purposes. Um, unfortunately, the Chair of that committee is not here this evening. I don't know if Lulu is prepared to give a, an update on that, but it's pretty self-explanatory. There is a need for fields in our district, and the council member um, is looking at, yeah, what is our, what is our stance on this? Do we wanna urge the department to make that official request at the State Department of Education for facilities, as well as the State Board of Education, to ensure that we have, uh, school grounds, recreational purposes available to our community? They supported that recommendation, and they are, uh, passing it on to us for, uh, position, so. Would anyone like to motion to accept this recommendation? And support the Honolulu City Council Resolution twenty-four dash five one?
It's quicker.
Yep, Kuke?
Um, I guess I will motion for discussion.
Okay, so there is a motion to accept, recognizing the discussion. Is there a second?
This is Mayata, I second.
Mayata with the second, members, it's been moved and seconded, we are in discussion. Kuke, discussion?
Yeah, I'm mahalo, um, Chair. I, you know, I, I support the concept, I support the idea. I, I get outstanding questions, however. Yeah, I mean, it, you know, for instance, if Blanche Pope over here in a homestead is utilized for if the field is utilized for football practice, even scrimmaging, possibly even games. Who and where does the burden lay when it comes to field and ground maintenance? I mean, look, it's raining. What happens, three days, four days after one heavy rain, and then twenty cars, thirty cars pull up? And instead of parking in a parking lot and walking to the field, the, the thirty vehicles decide to drive into the field. Tracking mud, potentially damaging the grounds. Yeah, we already know the D O E budget is basically minimal. So where does the burden lay when it comes to the city and county requesting the use of these D O E fields? Did the city and county also propose in their, their action, yeah? That they will be responsible if the community or if the public utilizes these state lands? That the city and county will also be liable and responsible for the maintenance and fixing of these, these fields? Can Lulu or anybody representative of the, uh, Parks and Recs Committee or the city and county answer that for us this evening?
Mahalo, I don't think the council members.
Fortunately, I.
Oh, go ahead, Lulu.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I, I don't, I can't answer, I wasn't expecting to do this. So let me see if I can go back notes, if there's any information on that.
Mahalo, Lulu.
I, I am reading currently, um, you know, there's quite a bit of whereas is Kuke, if you wanna hear them, none of them really talk about that specific. It does say that, uh, the State of Hawaii Department of Education oversees public school campuses across the state, including fields and outdoor field facilities thereon. The city and county of Honolulu owns, operates, maintains, and or manages eighty parcels of land housing, D O E schools, some of which are D P R parklands. Uh, the D P R permits many D O E activities in city parks, including numerous D O E athletic teams, practices, and games. And the D P R permits the D O E to use lands, uh, for recess, physical education classes, and other class purposes. There is a whereas that speaks to section three zero two A dash one one four seven in the H R S Hawaii Revised Statutes that states, upon the request by a county, the State Board of Education, quote unquote, shall make school grounds available after school hours in the county where the request is made for use by the county requesting the same whenever this can be done without interference with the normal and usual activities of the school and its pupils. And whereas in H R S section three zero two A dash one one four eight, further states that all, quote, public school buildings, facilities, and grounds shall be available for general recreational purpose and for public and community use, whenever these activities do not interfere with the normal and usual activities of the school and its pupils. End quote. Um, there is conversation in, in the be it resolves that that might help, but it doesn't specifically address your concern, Kuke, but I will read them nonetheless. The city and county be it, be it resolved, the city and county of, council of the city and county of Honolulu, that the Department of Parks and Recreation is urged to officially request to use the State of Hawaii State Department of Education facilities after school hours for the purpose of enhancing and improving the public's opportunities for recreational and community activities, particularly in park districts where the demand for field space exceeds the availability of city and county of Honolulu recreational facilities. And be it further resolved that the State Board of Education is urged to ensure the availability of school grounds for use by the Department of Parks and Recreation whenever such use can be granted without interfering with the normal activities of the schools. Um, it doesn't say or answer anything specifically to your question of who therefore would manage the burden. However, I think in, uh, a potential position, that question can be cited and asked.
Mahalo, and, and I, I do agree with, with the reso. Mahalo, and and I I do agree with with the reso, right, because we have great examples of the symbiotic relationship. I mean, Wa Manalo Elementary and Intermediate, O'Hala, Keolu Elementary, yeah, where where both. City and county activities or happen as well as state DOE. But again, in the instance of Blanche Pope Elementary over here, where. There isn't necessarily an established athletic field as well as facilities. Because no more one bachelor outside, but give one big field. So the burden lies again on the janitors of Blanche Pope Elementary. To be there present to open the facilities so people can utilize the luau and then close it after. My concern is unless we ask these questions and be very specific about the communities that we represent. We gonna get left out of the the conversation, yeah, and then what happens in the end, we know. We get prime examples, yeah, of how parks in Wa Manalo. Have been ignored historically, we have great leadership now on the council. That is trying their very, very best to ensure we don't repeat the mistakes of our past, however. In Wa Manalo, we get great examples of this partnership between the city and county of Honolulu and DOE. And then we also have an example where that necessarily never has been explored before. I just wanna make sure, because time and time again, I've seen our native Hawaiian communities, even more specific down to. The native, the Hawaiian homesteads over here in Wa Manalo, get overlooked. When we, when it comes to maintenance, when it comes to services. Prime example, until we had a town hall meeting and brought up the issue about the speed humps. Fronting Blanche Pope Elementary, that was basically nothing but paint on the ground, it didn't get resolved. Today, it's more of a speed hump than it was yesterday. So I mahalo our leadership in these positions for listening to us. I just gotta ask the question, so Chair, I mahalo for the time and attention, I will yield back to you.
Mahalo, Kuike, thank you, and as mentioned, certainly if we do take a position, those questions can be more specifically articulated. We can request those uh questions to be answered, any other discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, uh members, the motion has been moved and seconded to support the city and county of Honolulu's Honolulu City Council Resolution. Twenty-four dash five one relating to the urging of the Department of Parks and Recreation to make official requests for the use of State Department of Education. Facilities and the State Board of Education to ensure availability of school grounds for recreational purposes. It has been moved and supported by Kuike and then Moyata seconded, um we will be voting to again support this item. As requested, when your name is called, um please go ahead, or when the time is called actually. Uh to state your vote, please go ahead and do so at that time, so with that being said, members. Uh are there any abstentions, anyone abstain to voting on this item, any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, any nays? Hearing none, uh with that being said, members, we have eight represented this evening, we will go ahead and accept that with eight i's, zero nays and zero abstentions. With the note of the kuleana to Malama, the spaces as set forth by Kuike, Kuike, does that uh sum up your concern? Sorry.
Um, this is Kuike, mahalo, and and when when this is heard at the council, then I will voice my. I will ask the appropriate questions.
Okay, mahalo. I will make it known though in our um testimony as well, at the next opportunity that there is question about maintenance. Okay, members, mahalo Nui for that, thank you very much, we will pass that out. Rachel, are we okay to go back to the Kenani question, or should we continue on?
Well, I can jump in on that now.
Okay, we'll go back, members, to letter E, and I I do need to apologize, I believe I skipped over the governor's report. I don't recall taking the governor's report, so um he did send me a report and I will read it out. My apologies, uh Tony, if you're still on, I apologize for that, and to the community, I apologize for that oversight. Uh Rachel?
Okay, um I spoke with um. For and they were saying that if there's no motion made to vacant the seat, then she'll remain on the board. And I explained about if she was abs, if she does become absent, you know, next month in July, it's it's still restarts the absence. Um amount in July, so you just gotta wait till the third month again.
Okay, so Kuike, the way I'm understanding what Rachel just shared is if even in July, we run into the fifth absence, it just voids and then she starts again. Come July, cuz the the term runs to June.
Good Chair, I I I have a question.
Yep.
Um who, what sizes is the member body?
Thirteen.
Okay, so thirteen, that makes us, we need seven, right?
Seven for quorum, correct.
Okay, so let me pose a question to Rachel, hypothetically, Rachel, yeah, if for the rest of the year. From June, from June all the way to December, if only six of us come. And we know and we lack the authority of quorum, at what point does the Neighborhood Board Commission? Yeah, their authority kick in and vacate these seats, because again. W- because we're a thirteen-member body, but we only have six show up consistently over the the next seven months. That means we cannot take any action on anything, so at what point does the Neighborhood Board Commission step in and say, you know what? With our authority, we're gonna issue the remaining seats vacant. And then we're gonna work with you, the community, to possibly change the numbers or reduce the. The body, the member body, that way the community can meet quorum, when does that happen, Rachel?
Um, so if it does become a problem, um the Chair could put on the agenda to, for example. Uh let's say they wanna change the sub-district seats to at-large, that could help too, so it opens, you know, for everybody to join. And then another suggestion. That could also work would be to ask if the amount of members could be less than two. And then the Neighborhood Commission Office would take that vote uh to see if they can pass that.
Okay.
Kuike, it will be um, it will be up to us to provide that to the commission. We'll have to make the recommendation and then the commission uh will will be able to act on it.
No, I mahalo, and it's very clear from you, so mahalo, Rachel.
Okay, so we'll go back, does this board wish to take any action this evening, the previous recommendation was no, but I'll ask for a restatement on the motion? Members, anyone, yeah, Kuike?
What are you asking?
Uh for a motion. On this item, are we taking, we're gonna take a motion, so what is the motion?
Um, I guess, since my mic is off, color my taco. I guess my emotion with with all of the attributes and values of aloha, yeah, that we exercise ahunui. And patience and allow grace to uh Kenani who has dedicated the last four, possibly five years of her life and her ohana. To this community through this capacity on this board and that we take no action, so our action this evening is to take no action. And vacators.
Hey, the the motion is to not take any action, is there any second?
This is Moyata, I second.
Moyata with the second members, we are voting, we are voting uh on this. Uh three absences to not take any action at this time, Kuike motion, Moyata seconded, we're in discussion, are there any discussions? Okay, hearing none, we will close the discussion, members, you are voting I, nay, or abstain, when your name is called, please go ahead. Uh and acknowledge your vote, excuse me, members, are there anyone that abstain to this vote, any abstentions? Hearing none, are there any nays, anyone voting nay or no? Hearing none, that recognizes eight members present with eight i's, zero nays and zero abstentions. This board will not take any action on the vacating of this seat, mahalo Nui for that discussion and your action, members, this evening. We have our last item on the agenda noting it's nine forty-five P M. Plan Committee, we had sent in a committee charter amendment changing the membership from seven to nine. Um and there's a note that we are looking to consolidate the residentially challenged committee. And the Transportation Committee into the Wa Manalo Community Plan Committee. Um that is what is before us this evening to amend the charter to reflect these items, is there a motion to accept the amendments?
I move. I second.
Was that Ted with the motion?
It was, yeah.
Thank you, Ted, and Kuike with the second, members, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll close the discussion, members, you're voting yes to support the amendments of adding seven members. Uh nine members instead of seven and the consolidation of the residentially challenged committee and transportation committee into the Wa Manalo Community Plan Committee. It's been moved and seconded, are there any abstentions? Recognizing none, are there any nays or no? Recognizing none, seeing eight members present, we will recognize eight i's, zero nays and zero abstentions, mahalo for your time there, members. Meeting announcements, uh next commission office, commission meeting, excuse me, is scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, six P M. At Webex and Kapala Mahale, first floor, conference room one five three. Next Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June tenth, seven P M and will be hybrid, Education Committee. Second Thursday, June thirteenth, five P M. Hybrid Hawaiian Affairs Committee is this Thursday, May sixteen, twenty twenty-four, six P M. Parks and Recreation, third Monday, May twenty and twenty twenty-four, seven P M. And the Wa Manalo Community Plan Committee on the third Tuesday on May twenty-first, seven P M. Ololo broadcast schedule is um on the channel forty-nine, Ololo fourth Monday of the month at nine P M and the first and third Saturdays of the month at three P M. There is a link for video replay, if you so choose to need that, it is available on the agenda as well. Oi Kai Neighborhood Board number one meets on the last Thursdays, Kahalu Neighborhood Board twenty-nine meets on the second Wednesday. We have the Kani Ohe Neighborhood Board number thirtieth meeting on the third Thursday. And we have the Kai Lua Neighborhood Board thirty-one meeting on the first Thursday of each month. Please check the confirmation on the honolulu.gov backslash N C O. Uh website for confirmation, I will turn it over to Rachel for any N C O updates, do you have any updates at this time, Rachel?
Yeah, I have one thing, okay. Uh we're going through our new website and then we noticed that there are some, or members of neighborhood boards are that are missing like a. Uh one public contact information, so I'm gonna go be going through that and then I'll email the Chair about like who's missing. Just so that he knows and then he'll probably reach out if, you know, if if I'm missing that, okay, thank you, that's it.
Mahalo, uh members, there's a request that we have one public contact information and email or a number available to the public. Uh particularly to contact you through uh your sub-district, so if if you can present that, that would be appreciated. Um, hearing no other information or any other board business before the board this evening, we will ask for an adjournment. And uh anyone wishing to close this off in Pule this evening? Okay, hearing none, we will ask you to close in whichever way you feel necessary. But we will bring this meeting to a close, we wanna mahalo all of you folks for your service. Uh to all of those that attended and continue to contribute to Wa Manalo's well-being, mahalo for your folks' time and energy this evening. Uh we bid you folks all a safe evening wherever you may be, uh that your travels be well and that this um. Rain, while very desperately needed, uh continues to subside as we look at um the safety of our people. With that being said, members, we will adjourn at nine fifty P M. We appreciate your folks' time and energy, bid you folks a good evening, thank you so much for your service, see you folks soon.